Good evening.
Good evening.
I have to call the October 23, 2018 Regular Meeting, USD 500 Board of Education Meeting to order. Would you please stand for Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Ms. Westphal, please call the roll.
Carol Brown.
Present.
Maxine Drew.
Present.
Jamie Humphries.
Present.
Frida Jones.
Present.
Wanda Brown-McPage.
Present.
Dalina Nguyen.
Present.
Stacey Yeager.
Thank you. I'd like to have a motion, please, to approve the regular agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the regular agenda. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Fellow say no. Motion passed. Communications, Dr. Charles Faust. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you all for attending. This has been, once again, a busy week. I think we just moved places like we've been here all week.
We have.
Right. But I want to thank everyone. We've had a busy but a fun week. It's been exciting to literally talk about some of the directions in which we need to go into in just improving student achievement through the impact of instruction. I also want to thank everyone for coming out last night. The four of you that were there last night, thank you so much. And it was good to hear from the students and from their perspective. We are getting together in November. We're going to be bringing a superintendent student council, and they will have viewpoints. Those will be students from the high school. And then we will get some perspectives from our middle and elementary, but we will be definitely talking with those high school students because it's important to have that valuable insight from them to know what's up next for them. So we are ready to rock and roll.
All right. Well, again, good evening, and I too want to thank the board members and staff for coming out on the crisp Saturday past that we had the opportunity to engage each other in serious discussion about test scores, graduation rates. And so, you know, you don't want to overuse the cliche, "It takes a village, but we're all in this together." And so, we didn't have to reaffirm our commitment, but Board, we'd like to ask you to keep your calendars open because we will have to do this regularly for the next couple of three, four months because it's not an easy task and it just demands our attention. Secondly, while May, we are just blessed to recognize all our recipients, wanted to take a few seconds to acknowledge two of our Sumner students who were recipients of the Judge Lisa White Hardwick Academic Excellence Scholarship Competition winners. And I will apologize in front to their names, but Namara Freeman, sophomore Sumner, and Kamara- Amara Freeman, sophomore Sumner. And so, they were recognized and received the scholarship upwards of about three weeks ago now, Kansas City, Missouri, the Jackson County Bar Association. And then finally, had a chance to meet with Daniel Candlebinder, president of United Auto Workers Local 31. And in the course of conversation, he told me to give his regards to Ms. Lisa Garcia, that they were last year very pleased to work with the district for book bags, backpacks, and that many of his members have relationships with some of our schools, including New Chelsea. But that we are going to look for opportunities to engage their 2,000 employees, folks, at General Motors Plant, major corporation. So they are, they're looking to contribute to the community while we may have 22,000 students, that's 22,000 families that also need our attention. Also, we talked about it on Saturday, that there are a lot of organizations that are just waiting to be asked. And so, of course, I'm going to ask them to call Susan and leave their name and number, and at any time, we're going to look for opportunities to engage our community. So, thank you. That concludes my comments. Other comments, please?
Okay, just like to say that I was very excited to be a part of the School Board Retreat that we had on this past Saturday, and also, I enjoyed attending the listening tours and hearing the different perspectives from not only staff, but also parents as well as students. And I did attend the one last night at F.L. Schlegel. I had the opportunity also to come to the central office this week to attend their kickoff campaign for United Way, and I'm very enthusiastic about encouraging others as well as being a part of it myself.
I did. You go ahead.
I've been out visiting kindergarten and first grade classrooms, which is always a joy, getting to visit with the kids and to see the instruction going on. I got to see the balanced literacy in action, which was very interesting for me because it's kind of the same things that I did at home with my kids, but it's a little bit more organized. So, it tells me I did the right thing. And I saw the eureka math in action. We had the retreat on Saturday and the listening tours, but I've been doing some outside reading because we are redesigning education in Kansas. And one of the things I saw was by the Emporia Gazette about the schools out there that are being redesigned. And I wanted to share the article with board members because I found it very informative. It's a short read, but it just shows what everyone across Kansas is doing with our kids. And lastly, I found a really good book. Someone gave it to me, told me about it. It's called What School Could Be? It's a gentleman that has been doing a lot of research on redesigning schools, so it fits in with what we're doing here with our academies. And it's a very good read. He went across the nation to all these different school districts that were doing different things. And like the article, I found it fits in with what we're doing. It's not a very high-tech book, so you don't have to have dead silence to read it, but it's got really good ideas and some of the things we are already doing in our district. So if you want something to read besides your murder mysteries or your espionage thrillers, this is a really good one. It's by Ted Dintersmith. That looks like a German name to me, but you never know. But it's called What School Could Be? So I just thought I would share that with you guys. It's, I like to do a lot of reading as people could tell you.
Okay. Since the last board meeting, I went to Harmon to see their classroom projects that they had out there. Went to the welcome reception for Dr. Faust and the new dean out there at KCK Community College. It's been so much going on. The marching band festival was wonderful.
Oh, yes.
Yes, it was wonderful. And then after that, had, goodness, the volleyball, Sumner volleyball.
Oh.
Excuse me. And then, of course, the United Way kickoff. And then last Saturday, I also was here for the retreat. But we've been busy, 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 so it's been a joy, and the listening tours have been wonderful. So wait anxiously to see the outcome and where we go from there.
Well, I want to say, agree that it's been an awesome time between our last meeting till now. The board retreat was very well organized, so thank you all for really presenting the information to us and giving us an opportunity to learn our personality styles. That's one thing that Dr. Faust had us do as part of understanding each other as a board, is to see what our personality styles were like so that we can understand some different dynamics of what to consider when explaining different changes. Also, did attend that welcome reception for Dr. Faust and the new Kansas City, Kansas superintendent. I participated in the listening tour at Sumner, which we were reminded that we needed to have more accountability to the community to communicate, which was something that we committed to during the board listening tour. And I love when people raise accountability and say, "Hey, you guys told us that you would give us a summary of what was going on. What's happening in update?" So I did communicate with Dr. Faust earlier today to request that we get a summary of those questions to make sure they were all addressed within the next two weeks so we can have valid information to take back to the community to let you know that your concerns have been heard and that we were listening, and things have happened and changed as a result of that, but there's room for growth. And so, if we missed any areas of opportunity or some concerns did not get addressed, then we will make sure that we look at them to get them addressed as soon as possible. So during the election time, we all said, "Hey, we're going to make sure that we help hold people accountable, but we have to also hold ourselves accountable for the commitments that we made." So I want to thank those who reminded us to communicate more, which is something that will happen more often. And then also, parent-teacher conferences happened last week, so thank you to all the teachers and staff and support people who stay late to help with those teacher conferences. Infinite Campus has been a hot-button tool. I really appreciate communication and a phone call to all parents apologizing for some of the situations that happened. I know I received a number of text messages and emails of concern, and one person, a couple people raised last night, the line of communication. So I'll be also following up with Dr. Faust more about what his parents can do to get that direct communication, or if there's a department here that everybody can go to that has that expert knowledge for Infinite Campus. So I'll just be digging a little bit deeper because as a parent, there are some things that we can't see that we think we should see or should look a certain way. And so, one thing I encourage is that sometimes that learning curve doesn't always go as smooth, but I can see the positive things with Infinite Campus that will be there once we're ready to receive it. And that was all. So thank you so much for the opportunity to share.
I also had the chance to go to the reception for our superintendent and as well as the president of the community college, and that was well attended, a lot of fun. And I think it's good when we can bring the college, the elementary, high school, and all the different community people together because we're there for a common good to better our community, and that's important. Met a lot of interesting and neat people. I also attended the retreat. I thought that was good. I think the more we talk, that we can better understand each other. I think we all agree that we want what's best for the kids. Sometimes the road we take to get there, we may part, but hopefully, we can get back on the same road and come together and come to some agreement. So I think that's important. We've also been working with teachers on negotiations for the contract, so just ask that you send up some good spirits so that we can work that out because we have good teachers, we have good administrators, we want to encourage them, we want to all work together, and we want to all do our best. I wish we just had millions and billions of dollars, but we don't. But we just have to do what we can to do the best that we can, and that's what we have to work on. Also attended a program with Dr. Faust for STEM program in Kansas City, Missouri, and it was awesome to get to meet the first black astronaut, Mr. Blueford, to hear him speak and then talk about the STEM program with engineers, and that's something we got to push our kids to because we want them to be and do the best that they possibly can. And it's not all about money, but it's nice when you can make a decent salary and you don't have to work three and four and five and six and seven jobs to make ends meet. And that's where we've kind of gotten to, so we want to give them the opportunity so we can hear them say that I'm an engineer, I'm making 200 and so-and-so thousand dollars, and we can say, "Wow, we did a good job. He's done a good job." So we have to continue to push that program as well.
Okay. Ms. Brown?
Yeah, I'd like to say, I attended the reception for Dr. Faust and the president of the community college, and I was really impressed with the fact that it appears that we're going to work together with them, and there is a plan in place for us to kind of strengthen each other's efforts. I was also impressed with the commitment that we have from MVP, our legal firm, and to understand a little bit of the history between the school district and that law firm. We have some deep roots, and we've had a great relationship that is only going to get better.
Well, thank you. And just to reemphasize, I've also had conversations with Dr. Yeager about our wrap-up, our feedback. And once we get the summary, we'll review, a couple of us will review it. Remember, they were videotaped, so we all took our notes. They are on tape, so if there's anything that is missed in the update, we will make sure to plug in that gap. At your desk, notice 2018 Reasons to Believe Celebration, Thursday, November 15, 6:00 PM, reception, 7:00 PM ceremony. Sure, we'll get more information on that. Put it on your calendar. Any other comments? All right. Now we move to a special part in the program, recognition of our student and employee of the month. So, Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Direct it.
Yes, so if we could have the board go in front of the daisies, we'll have our student of the month and the nominator come forward.
Oh, look at him. Mr. Kindergartner of the Year.
This is Peter. He's amazing. He's from Clodhike. As Clodhike Eagles, we follow four character traits, safety, ownership, achievement, and respect. Peter has shown all four sore traits from day one. He is always safe and takes care to make sure that others are safe, for example, by pushing in chairs and closing the restroom door because we sometimes bump into it. He quickly took ownership of not only his own choices, but of our classroom and of our school. He is my go-to guy for making sure breakfast trash is taken out, crumbs are cleaned up, and lost crayons find a home. Peter was not asked to do this, he volunteered. Other students have started to model his ownership, and there are less comments like, "But that was not my mess," during cleanup. In addition to being academically on target in many areas, Peter is ready to help those that may need extra help during small group reading stations or during math. For example, he helps set up many of the Math Fluency Games and materials after he has done himself first, or he will share his materials if others have somehow managed to lose theirs. Ultimately, Peter shines with respect. He respects himself, his classmates, and the adults around him, and his belongings. Peter respects the differences in each person. He helps those who cannot open milks or notices that a student needs extra help putting on their shoes because, yes, that happens in our classroom. Peter embodies Kansas City, Kansas Public School very well.
Good evening. My name is Emily Lorette, and I nominated my teaching partner, Rachel Hoendorf. Rachel Hoendorf has worked at Frank Rushton Elementary School for nearly 20 years, first as a Title I aide and then as a classroom teacher. During her time at Frank Rushton, she spends many late evenings supporting school activities like game club, student council, Walking Wednesday, PTA meetings, the talent show, award ceremonies. Whether it's walking students home from club or putting up the letters on the outside bulletin board, Mrs. Hoendorf shows her passion for advocating and supporting our school daily through her words and actions. She volunteers for neighborhood cleanup for the RDA to support the community she not only teaches in, but lives in as well. She is always ready to lend a helping hand and many times sets schools sun up till sundown. Mrs. Hoendorf deserves recognition for her ongoing efforts to support our school and community, and she is a model for what we should be looking for in Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools. Thank you.
On our agenda, Ms. Carolyn Wyatt. Topic, school policy. Are you here, Mrs. Wyatt?
No.
Ms. Frida Tresvan, topic, dyslexia awareness. Welcome, Ms. Tresvan.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Dr. Nguyen, Dr. Faust, my name is Frida Tresvan. I'm assisted tonight by my two children, Annika, who's in second grade, and Antonio is in fifth grade. Our address is 1240 Burnett, Kansas City, Kansas, 66102. We are coming before you tonight to celebrate Dyslexia Awareness Month, which is federally observed throughout the month of October. Dyslexia Awareness Month is annual event aimed to further understanding of dyslexia. Dyslexia is a language-based learning disability. Dyslexia refers to a cluster of symptoms which result in people having difficulties with specific language skills, particularly reading. Students with dyslexia usually experience difficulties with other language skills such as spelling, writing, and pronouncing words. What you may not know is that dyslexia affects one in five children. That's 20% of the students in your district. This means that in every classroom from kindergarten to 12th grade sits approximately four or five students who have dyslexia. And to be more sure, dyslexia is real, and not something children will outgrow, nor is it age-appropriate deficits. In fact, Congress also agreed that it was real when it included dyslexia as a qualifying condition under special education eligibility criteria for specific language disability in 1975, and was reaffirmed in a Department of Education colleague letter in 2015. During this time, researchers have collected a tremendous amount of evidence about how dyslexia is manifested in the brain, how it manifests in the classroom, the genetic component of dyslexia, but most importantly, we know what works for students with dyslexia. The National Reading and National Institute of Health recommend a structured literacy Orton-Gillingham approach to dyslexia, or, excuse me, Orton-Gillingham approach to literacy instruction for people with dyslexia, which is sequential in nature and introduce new skills slowly with plenty of repetition until the student achieves mastery. Despite this mountainous of research that has been well documented and is available to anyone on the internet, this instruction approach is not being taught in many teacher education programs throughout the nation, leaving teachers ill-equipped to face this challenge in the classroom. As you and the administrative staff and teachers work toward the goals set in the district continuous improvement plan, we implore you to make dyslexia a priority in your professional development. As Dr. Sally Shaywitz, the preeminent researcher in dyslexia states, "We do not have a knowledge gap, we have an action gap." Now, I would like to highlight the wonderful action of my children who have taken on the mission of sharing their struggles and successes as students with dyslexia. During the past 10 months, they have learnt advocacy and leadership skills, which are two of the many strengths of people with dyslexia. We have spoken with a number of community churches, organizations, and support groups to bring light to this hidden issue. In honor of Dyslexia Awareness Month, my children worked with and received proclamations from the Kansas Governor and the mayor of the Unified Government of Wyandotte County to celebrate Dyslexia Awareness Month. We would like to present these proclamations to the Kansas City, Kansas Public School District in the hopes that it may help remind you in your daily activities that of those 20% of students with dyslexia who rely on you to provide them with the skills needed to succeed in life. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, board updates as soon as Dr. Faust gets settled. First on our agenda, Dr. Kelly Mather, September 20 enrollment update.
Good evening, Dr. Nguyen, members of the board. Dr. Faust?
Good evening.
How are you all?
Great, thank you.
Let me see. You have in your board docs a spreadsheet. I'm just going to put this up for the audience. This is just a very quick overview of where we are on a pre-audit student count number. I think that's about as big as I can get it. So the numbers are essentially, in a summary for you all, kind of negligible or basically flat. Oh, thank you. Wow, it was like magic. Which is not a bad thing, it's a good thing. And actually, I've kind of played with these numbers, so these are all self-reported numbers by the schools because we take every week practices for about five to six weeks up to the September 20 count day, when we actually have to, and required by state, to freeze our data. The audit will actually take place right after the Thanksgiving break and will conclude prior to the Christmas holiday break. So that's good news, too, for us because if you remember, last year, our audit did not occur until the second semester, and we did not receive our final allocation numbers, well, we thought, in May, and then we recently received a final legal max in September. So having the audit completed in the first semester, which we've traditionally always had done, allows us to know our numbers much sooner. But we'll have to look at our preliminary numbers to see how we think we're doing. And overall, I think we're where we thought we would be, but I wanted just to break this out for you to look at the pre-K elementary, middle, and high school and alternative school students. It looks like we're up about 178 kids, again, pre-audit, preliminary, so it's a slight tick upward, which is a good thing. We're seeing an increase in our secondary schools, middle and high schools, so I think that's a good thing as well. We see a decline a little bit in the alternative numbers. We see a decline a little bit in the alternative numbers, that's not very alarming to me frankly when I look at all of the alternative programs which include JDC, KVC, Bridges, Fairfax, Gateway, and 500 Reach. Many of those, that decline in those numbers are from the adult learners and/or some of the kids that are under 19 but primarily at 500 Reach. We get funding for the actual students that attend there, so it really shouldn't affect us overall funding-wise, but I anticipate we'll see that number go up by the audit. So I'm not overly concerned about that. I put down here the total estimated FTE number at 21,409. We'll see how close I am after the audit. Really difficult to assess because again, the auditor has to go through all of them and then qualify each of the students. Last year's FTE audit was 21,159 I believe, so again, it's a higher uptick than the 178 but not much. So, we're going in the right direction, that's the summary. But this estimated FTE audit for me is counting the eligible preschool kids that we get funding for and then the K-12 kids that we get funding for. So again, I have to kind of estimate, but I think it's a good thing, negligible in the sense that not huge leaps and bounds, but we're moving in the right direction. Wanted to share that with you.
Questions, comments? Great, thank you. Well, don't go far.
Okay. What's next?
Ready for the next item?
Sure.
Bond update.
Okay. That's the rest of these files, so that'll work out well. Let me just do a brief overview and then I'll have Mr. Clemens and Mr. Moore join me. We'll try to get through this data because we do have two bid packages that we told you that we were going to review the bid tabs for you. So, you have in your Board docs the annual, very difficult to go through form that I always like to show you. So I just put this up here again for the audience. We have spent over the last month $8.6 million. Again, I say this, we knew that those expenditures would be increasing as more packages are being completed and done. And that concludes much of our summer project. So we have a balance of about 160, just over $166 million left to be spent in the overall bond issue. If we add in all of the packages that we have bid out which are to your left here, and two of those we will review with you tonight, which is the Carl Bruce Middle School and the John Fisk Elementary addition, we are at about a balance of 40 million. Now, I share that with you just to know where we're at in overall potential expenditures, but the actual expenditures are about 68 million total, so that's why the two different numbers. So we're going to do some brief picture updates for you of what we've done over the summer. We'll do that quickly and then we'll do the bid tabs because that's quite a bit of information. Questions about the dollars before I click off of that?
Dr. Mather, I don't have a question necessarily about the dollars, but there was an inquiry last night about how the YMCA was able to merge with the school to think of those areas. The point of where we are in this project, do we have any room to think of those considerations? Or is that something that...
That would really be probably a brand-new project. I know that they did a lot of collaboration with their bond issue and they built their schools so that they could build on essentially a why with that school and then they have access for that. All of these bond projects and the sheet I just showed you are outlined in all those 16 work packages. So we would not be able to probably restart over to do something like that, but I think it's an excellent consideration for future if the district chooses to go that direction. Excellent partnership though for businesses and engaging families and providing recreational opportunities for kids and adults.
Great, thank you.
They've done that for a while in Bonner. Let's see here, pictures. Clemens, how are you?
Good.
All right. Madam President, Dr. Faust, Board, Doug Clemens, Director of Physical Properties. Here we have Wellborn, really we're going to focus on the three new projects that are still ongoing right now. Wellborn, Gloria Willis, and Rosedale just started. So here is Wellborn. Actually, we're still working on the window frames and the glass, we're almost all done with that except for the main stairwell, but the building is completely dried in, they're working on sheetrock and paint actually, some areas of the building, the main office area and that first corridor are actually done already. They're working on the grid work for the acoustical ceilings, so making good progress there. You can see the things that they would anticipate going to be working on and finishing over this next month. Again, more sheetrock, installation of cabinets, are going to start, actually the sidewalk, some of the site work will start Monday there at Wellborn. I was out there maybe a week, week and a half ago making good progress, very nice, very nice building.
Looking like a school.
It looks like a school, actually. Yes. It does.
Good thing, it doesn't work out.
It is. Then the new Gloria Willis Middle School, actually also looks like a school, which is a very good thing. In fact, I'll tell you that the, all of the classrooms are actually framed up right now when you go and look at it. So it really does look like a school building. About 20% of the windows are in, 80% of the masonry throughout the building is done, still working on that. Of course, the roofing, they've got the first core on, so it's watertight and they can continue to work inside. Working on all the HVAC items, and you can see there again, there at the bottom, working on the masonry, roofing. They're going to start up the rooftop units actually here in a couple of weeks in early November. And then they'll start working on the sheetrock in November on that project as well. Any questions, I'm going kind of fast. And then...
Are we unscheduled to open? That'd be my question.
Yes, we are.
As important.
Lee?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then Rosedale, we did get started this last month with that Rosedale addition with the demo of the old stadium that sat out there to the east of the gymnasium. So that really is just kind of getting started. You can see that they've torn that down, they've been working on some of the utilities, the storm sewer and sanitary sewer that they can get in now. They'll be working on the footings and engrading the pad, getting that ready. We anticipate that they'll start going vertical with walls just a little bit before the Christmas holidays, so that's kind of what we're working for. So that also is, kind of came off, you know, started off with a bang, so going very well. Any questions on anything?
Do you know if we're recycling any of the things that we're tearing down, are we just, do you know what's happening to those materials?
You know, truthful I don't. I don't know if we can add anything, but I don't think we're probably doing any of that other than what's already planned. You know, we do try to salvage certain materials out of the, in fact, I'll tell you, whenever we go in and tear buildings down, we go in and salvage quite a bit of materials. I don't know that we had too much here in this stadium, there wasn't much there to get, but no, as far as salvaging the materials.
Okay, thank you. That's the question.
I have a question. When you salvage, do we get the material? Can we sell it? Do we make money? Who gets that?
When we at the shop go in and salvage, we go in and try to pull the materials that we can reuse in other locations. You know, sometimes we'll pull off, for example, down at the storeroom, we've been pulling out those heaters actually reused in the new facility that we bought, salvaging every part and piece that we can off some of the equipment down there, hinges, handles, all of that. We save that and use that where we can.
Okay. And when it's over, if there's anything left, do we sell it and the district gets the money back? How does that work?
That's generally, whatever's left in there is part of the demo package and the demo company takes possession of that and that's actually kind of part of their, I would say compensation, but that's really what it is. For them to salvage and recycle and do what they can with that.
Let me ask you a question, it may be premature, but I know you can handle it.
Okay.
Let me present to you a hypothetical.
Yes ma'am.
And then you inform us of a reality. If in the process of, doesn't matter, Wellborn or whatever, putting in windows, and doesn't matter what you're doing, to tell you the truth, if you do it incorrectly, who absorbs that cost?
The, that is why J.E. Dunn is the CEM at risk. And it's their responsibility to make sure the product all gets put in correctly.
The hypothetical is if a mistake is made.
Okay.
Who absorbs that cost to correct it and do it properly?
I would say J.E. Dunn or the subcontractor.
Okay. So have we had any of those hypotheticals in a couple, in our construction?
Um, I can say that we're working through some of those things right now.
So, I take that as a yes?
Yes.
Okay. And when you say we're working through it, does that mean then, as you stated, J.E. Dunn is absorbing some of the costs when they have to redo the work?
Yes. I would say that's a fair statement.
Okay.
Or the subcontractor in this particular instance that I'm thinking of right now.
We're probably thinking of the same situation. Who knows? You know, great minds think alike.
Right, maybe.
So, just, do you feel it is your responsibility to inform the Board if those hypotheticals, realities come to pass?
Sure, yes. I mean, if we come to some sort of impasse where we're going to absorb more costs and we don't feel like it's...
No, you're saying you're absorbing the cost, so you're not going to assume anymore. Somehow, working through a mistake, if it's not put in properly, you've torn it out and there's been some agreement to absorb the cost, therefore you do not go back to the till for another drawdown or whatever.
Right.
Or cost overrun or something. So, what are you working through now?
There is a situation, particularly the one I have in mind at the Grant Edition, where they did not install some, the masonry subcontractor did not install a component of that brick wall. We're waiting to, I'm going to talk to the architects tomorrow to see if that is an acceptable method, what they did, and if they say no, then we have to go through what is the acceptable remedy.
Uh huh.
That's not a cost that the district's going to pay for.
Okay.
Right? Either the sub is going to tear it down and put it in exactly the way the plans show or the architect is going to say, here is the acceptable remedy and it'll still be done per that plan.
Right. It was brought to our attention, some of us, during the summer with Wyandotte, that in the rush to get busy, get completed.
Right.
Prior to school opening, that, let's put it like the sheetrock was put up to cover work that was not completed. Were we misinformed?
I'm not aware of that, I can certainly look into that and see if that's the case.
Okay, okay. Well, just asking, I mean, when, in my opinion, when we have a title, bond update, you know, we've all, many of us have built homes and, you know, the water didn't come up with the pipes for the washing machine.
Right.
And that's why you have walk-throughs and walk-throughs and walk-throughs. So, it's my expectation and I'm sure it is the public's expectation, since these are public dollars, that if, that if there are challenges, that you would inform us and that, knowing that there would never be a consideration that would harm anyone because that liability is just off the charts.
Absolutely, right.
But, but moving forward, because we still have a lot of work to do.
Yes.
I would appreciate if there are those hypotheticals/realities that you would bring to our attention and recognize that mistakes happen, but someone's going to have to correct it.
Right.
Of course, before the dollars paid, so I appreciate your honesty, thank you.
Carl Bruce or John Fisk or which one?
Michael or...
Okay, we are going to review the bid tab for the Carl Bruce Middle School. You should have this on your Board docs. You may have to refresh your Board docs if you're not seeing it, but it should be up there. So if you're not seeing the bid package that looks like this for Carl Bruce, I'll have Lee go through, through that.
There it is.
And start there and then go through, how do you want to do that?
Yeah, I can go through the bid tabs and then the results. Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Faust, Board, thank you for the opportunity tonight. I think I was here a month ago going through some bid tabs for work package 15, which was Rosedale Middle School. So, I'll bore you with the long explanation of what you're looking at, but give you a quick refresher. So, this project that we're looking at is Carl B. Bruce Middle School, so it's the brand-new middle school in the northwest middle school site. We took bids in September, we've been diligently working through, vetting out the bids, and have come to put a GMP together. What you're looking at is the bid results. Again, the highlighted yellow is the low responsible bidder. We've included WM and L information there on the right-hand side and you've got the name of the trade partners on the left-hand side column. So, each one's broken down by bid package as you scroll through there. And, we do have, we do have some combo bids, as we mentioned last time. We'll highlight the ones of the combo bids that were low. We just list combo in that particular scope, but at the bottom of the, the end of the bid tab are the actual combo bids that we received and reviewed. So, overall, we thought we got really good coverage on this project. We are under our budget, our validated budget for this project. We are definitely seeing some prices increase and some, some packages, some trade partners getting overloaded with work at this point, there's a lot of work out there, so. But, good news is we were able to get good bid coverage on this and bring it in under budget, so. With that, does anyone have any specific questions on this bid tab?
On the Precast structural concrete, are they just the major company that does it? So you don't have a lot of bids for that, normally?
It is a pretty specialty scope and Precast is, we see the, that industry getting pretty busy at this point, so there are not a lot of folks out there that do Precast, so. And as you can see, our budget was a little bit under that, that budget in the blue line. We're, again, we're seeing the costs escalate a little bit on that due to workload.
So what's the status of the railroad lines on the property?
Good question, and I'm not sure I had the answer for that.
Well, they're still there.
They're still there.
More building in school on the property.
So, we never got, did get the answer as to, so didn't you see them first time around?
They're actually not actual railroad lines, but I'll let Mr. Go and he's working, his team's working on that to get that taken care of.
It's been suggested that we do like the old wily coyote roadrunner and just paint a place on the building where tracks go through. There aren't any actual...
Guarantee success.
Exactly, right.
You would no longer be our legal advisor.
That would probably be accurate, right? So, there are no actual railroad tracks at the school site. There is a railroad right-of-way because at one point in time there were railroad tracks that went through the school property. They went through a majority of that part of the city, so they would continue on into properties that are on either side of the school building as well. We've been in contact with the railroad company trying to get them to do a release of the lien on the proper, not the lien, a release of the right-of-way on the property. If that is not successful, and the real issue has been, it's so old, even the railroad's having trouble finding the documentation to support the existence of the right-of-way. So, if we're unable to find it, then the alternative is for us to do a quiet title action and file something in district court, serve the railroad companies, serve the Unified Government, which is not a real lawsuit, it's just everybody's agreeing that the right-of-way is no longer in existence. We've delayed doing that because we didn't want to incur the cost, because if the railroad will agree to just sign it over to us, then that's easier than going into court.
Okay. It's been an ongoing conversation piece.
Sure.
Historically, right-of-ways are 20 miles either direction, so I'm surprised that housing developments didn't have issues.
Yeah, and we had thought at one point in time the Unified Government had vacated a majority of the railroad right-of-ways in that area of the, of the city, but it does not appear that they specifically did away with the right-of-way that goes through the school property. So whether that extend, I suspect it does extend into the neighborhoods, I don't think there's any question.
It would have to, historically.
Yeah, I'm sure it does.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you want to...
Yeah, sorry, I'm trying to do this left... Yeah, sorry, I'm trying to do this left-handed, but I'm...
Yeah, that's a challenging mouse, okay, so, so that's Carlby Bruce, so the next bid package we're going to look at, yes, the final bid package, I guess, that we're looking at tonight, is the work, what we call Work Package 7A, which is the John Fisk Elementary School Edition, and so that includes a kitchen addition, multipurpose room, and two classrooms, and then also renovations for secure entrances, and then two new classrooms inside the existing building as part of the renovations, so, again, we took bids with this, for this project late in September, we've been going through and vetting those out, and so, the exact same format as we just looked at, yellow is the highlighted awarded trade partner, and again, I thought we did pretty well on bid coverage, some scopes we received more bids than other, there were, there, there was some pre-cast on this project, we did get a few more pre-cast bids on this particular one, and overall, I think we came in like, almost like right at our, at, as our estimate for this project, so, again, tough competitive market out there, a lot of busy contractors, but we were able to get a good number of bids to bring the project in, so.
So if you would qualify, if you would explain the no qualified bids in two areas, one was 11B for gym equipment, the other one was for 32B fences, gates?
Yeah, so that's just exactly what it is, we did not get any bids, I think one of those scopes, we actually got a late bid, our bids are due at 2:00, so we only received one bid and it was late, so it wasn't considered a qualified bid, so how we handle those is we, we'll carry an allowance of what we think that, that project is, that particular scope is worth, and the GMP will go back out to rebid and get another round of bids for those, or try to get another round of bids for that, and then utilize that allowance to, to award the, the low package and buy that scope out, so we do have it covered in the GMP, we just need to still go buy that out, so instead of holding up the entire project for a couple small scopes that we're not doing until later in the project, that's the approach we take, so we will still go out and get bids for those.
So is that the difference between 32B and 32C, or what was the changes, the scope change, or?
I'm not exactly sure, I think there, there, there was probably a situation where we are, I think that when we came in way over budget with the fence project bid, so instead of taking that bid, we're going to go back and find a more cost-effective way to provide that scope of work, and then, and then rebid it for that particular one, and then the 32C, like I said, I think we only got one bid and it was late, so we didn't accept it.
And so when you repost that, will that delay anything else, or?
No, these are, these are two scopes that will happen next summer, so not on the critical path, not, not as, not impacting us right now, it will be something that we'll get the GMP executed, we'll get the project going, and we'll, we'll start to bid those scopes out pretty quick, just to get it done, but it's not going to impact the schedule.
Okay.
Okay?
I got a quick question, are, are all of these local contractors, everybody here?
So we have the designation LBE on the right-hand column, so based on the definition of the, the LBE that we've discussed in previous meetings, that's basically what we're calling local.
Oh, I understand, just because they're LBE, they're local, is that what you say?
That's what, LBE is Local Business Enterprise, so that's what we're considering local.
Where's the landscaping, who handles, who is responsibility is it for the landscaping?
That was one of the two scopes we were just talking about, that we didn't get any qualified bids, so we, we will still carry that in our GMP as allowance, we will go get bids for that project.
Okay.
Review those with the team and, and, and award, award that scope once we've taken rebids on that.
Okay.
So we do not have a contractor right now onboard to do that scope of work.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Anybody have anything else, okay, so let's jump into bidder results. Yeah, just click on one, we'll talk about it.
Okay.
That's the one, nice job, okay.
Don't make this any bigger than that.
Which one is it?
The magic hammer.
So, again, this should look familiar, hopefully, this is where we've kind of been keeping track of, of the numbers of minority business enterprises, women business enterprises, and local business enterprises, as we spoke earlier, so working from right to, from left to right, we've got kind of description of what the, of what that particular line item is, we've got those broken down by the M.
Excuse me, which one are you looking at, the title?
We're looking at, sorry.
Outreach, says Doug, Work Package WP 07A Outreach Bid Results, there's three of them look alike, close titled.
It was the first one.
It was the first one.
Of the three.
Okay, thank you.
I'll come up with a better labeling of that. It's got four columns on it, it says bidder recruitment and results, that's the third line item on the heading.
You just got different colors.
Good, okay, so, again, the, the middle shaded column is kind of our bond totals, that covers all of the work package, which I believe we're up to 11 work packages now, included in those numbers, and then we've got a separate column for Work Package 7A, which was John Fisk, and then Work Package 13, which was Carlby Bruce, so, again, you'll see, just an example, is line item one is how many minority business enterprise bidders were invited, number two is how many of those bidders actually provided a bid, the line item number three is the number of MBE bidders that were awarded as low responsible bidder, the actual dollars is line item four, and then a percentage of those dollars to the total trade partner dollars awarded would be line item five, those, section A, B, and C follow the same format, just a different designation as listed there, and then again, D is our total MWL bidder summary as a, as a total summary, and then E is a, is a, is a total of non-bid summary, so, these results equal out to about 68% of our anticipated contract, construction cost bid out to date, so we've, we've went over that threshold of 50% and headed down, and then by the end of January, we'll have, we have another $50 million of projects over seven work packages bidding out, so by the end of January, we will be about 95% bid out for the total bond, so we will have a really good handle, first of the year, kind of what the, the bond dollars look like and how we're comparing to budget, but so far, so good, so.
Thank you.
And then currently, right now, we have Work Package 6A, which is FL Schlegel, that is out to bid right now, it's about a million and a half dollars' worth of work, it's science classrooms and secure entry, so we're taking bids on that early next month, and then the next package will be 6B, which is Harmon, which is some of the same work, science classroom, secure entry, and a new face on that building, so that's what's coming down the road, any questions on this information?
Have you seen any change since we had the J. E. Dunn Minority Bidding Event?
Change in regards to?
The amount of minority women applicants?
No, we did have an EIC meeting today, we did talk about working on some, some additional strategies, now that we've definitely, we've got some more projects coming out this fall out to bid to, to kind of refocus that, so I, I wouldn't say we've seen any differences, I think if you go through the work package and see the, the number of bidders that we're getting in each category, it seems to be fairly consistent, so, but as we talked about in that meeting, there's always room for improvement, so we want to continue to, to get that number up, so, but I can't, I'm not aware of any specific changes from that, since that last meeting.
Okay, also, have we thought about using social media as a platform to advertise when we have bids, such as our social media pages, websites, sponsored ads within that social media online presence?
No, we do have the website that we're using, I don't know if that's considered social media or not, I, and then we advertise in, in the local newspapers, but have not thought of, of doing, are you thinking like a, a Facebook type?
Right, Facebook, Instagram, or, or our own KCK public site, where we can click and say, hey, by the way, we have these bids available, because I don't see any of that bidding information on our bidding, there's some other ads and things that come up relating to, hey, these projects are coming up in various areas, but I've never seen our district posted.
If you actually click on the front of the webpage, on the Bond Referendum tab, that will take you to the website that we've showed you before, and that's all of the bid packages for the bond specific, you won't find the bid packages for the bond on our purchasing website, it'll be separate, so there's a link on the front page of our website that will show that, and then J. Dunn manages that link to that site, and then they update all the bid packages, so we use it on our website, but then they do, Makisha Bosby was with EIC, was talking about the myriad of things she does, we actually talked quite a bit too today about, you know, we have, seems like we have a lot of notices being sent out to minority and women-owned, frankly, and locally-owned businesses, but we're not getting a return on investment on that, a lot coming back in, if you can see by the numbers, so we had a lot of conversation with the folks at the EIC meeting today about strategies to improve that, Lee was referencing too, is we have, what, three or four small packages going out, like a million dollars, 1.5 million dollar packages, so we're hoping to encourage smaller businesses, both minority and non-minority businesses to bid on those, so, kind of talking about a variety of other strategies, but specifically, as far as social media, it's really just the website posting and newspaper, but not Twitter, not Instagram and all that.
So like the Black Chamber or Commerce or Hispanic, we shoot a blast to them already?
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
I, I have a question, we have a purchasing and diversity department, do they work with you guys, because I know companies who said that they called, they checked, and they didn't feel that there's the protocol, that they get lost in the shuffle, so how do we set that up where if someone sees something, they call, they inquire about it, how do they get a chance to actually bid, and what are the steps, what do they do, because they felt that it wasn't clear enough, and they needed a little bit more help, how do we get our foot in the door, you say it's open, but it seems like we're not really getting in, so I don't know, I'm just telling you what they're telling me, so how, how do we help them, how do we direct them to the right people, how do we make this work, where we have a department, you have a department, and they're actually working together, because I went to one of your meetings, I see a lot of people, I see diversity, but they all seem to be scrambling and scrambling, trying to figure it out, and it's really not clear, so how do they get to, get a piece of the pie, they want a piece, they want to work, they have something to offer, but I don't know what's going on, or maybe it's more that we don't see you know, help me, I'm trying to understand, because I want to explain it to them.
Let me respond by the school district, and I can't speak for J. Dunn, I'll let Lee do that, but just that our expectation, as you know, is that if they contact purchasing, Mr. Carell or Mr. Hernandez, who works with a lot of the minority vendors, they actually will direct and have, they're participating in the EIC meeting, but they'll direct those phone calls to J. E. Dunn specifically, so we're trying to encourage everybody we know, if they call specifically about bond, I don't know the specific situation you're thinking about, but I've also encouraged folks that if they're not getting the response they need, to call us directly, call myself, call Lee directly, I know Lee actually personally has reached out to two, one or two different vendors, specifically when we've asked them to, so we just have, we have to be informed about it, but, just so you all know, the expectation from our purchasing department, they work very closely with J. E. Dunn, and we're trying to communicate back and forth if we know folks that want to, want to work, because we got vendors that are bidding on our work for a school district, and trying to bid on the work for the bond projects as well, so if you know of somebody that happens, just let us know, and we'll try to make that connection for them, basically.
I would say the intent of our outreach events that we do, the publications, the newsletters, the invitation to bids, the website that we're managing, the EIC meetings that we're doing, all that is, is focused on trying to make it as clear and easy as possible to, to get the information on the street, because the best thing we can do is inform, right, and so we try to plaster contact information all over those meetings and all over the correspondence to say, call Linda Webb, she's our, she's our project administrator, my information is out there, typically, when particular projects come out, the project manager's information's available, so I, I would hope that in, in one of those avenues, we are, we are getting to, getting that information out there, at least that is the intent, as, as you asked, that is, that is the intent of, of all of those different events and outreach efforts that we're doing, is to, to, to get the information out there and, and give the opportunity to, to, to contact us if they're interested in the project.
And Dr. Mathers, I didn't, I, I have not followed up with, with looking at the ads that we have put in the, the call since the last conversation, that conversation seems like it was years ago.
It does.
What, what, did we change our, our, our language, our, to make it more?
Friendly?
Yeah, contractor friendly?
Yeah, I was looking at Mr. Carell, I wanted to make sure, but I think we did that right after, but yeah, I think there was some confusion about two different ads, but we changed the language.
Right.
There was a sentence or two at the bottom of that ad, if I remember.
Well, you had J. E. Dunn job to bid in Johnson County, J. E. Dunn job to bid in 500, and they were starkly different, one was cold, harsh, one was, oh, come, we welcome everybody to La La Land, and you know it wasn't that, that.
We want that one.
We want that one, okay, well, we'll, look next time, next bids are coming out when, and they're probably on this?
One bid package is out already, right now, is that what you asked?
Well, if that's already, the, the ad is already out, then.
There should be some ads out for that particular project, yes.
The ad is already out, then?
Yes, they posted.
Our, our particular ad, our, our ads.
They posted the ad.
Right, so we can't look at that, so we didn't write that ad, we drew attention?
We don't, we don't post the ads for the bond, we post ads for our work perhaps, but the bond, J. Dunn posted in all the newspapers, recall, are you putting the ones out for the bond at all, or?
No.
Okay, let's, let, let me roll that back then, those two ads were written by J. E. Dunn, is that what you're saying?
All of the, well, I can respond, I don't recall the specific ads, I remember the conversation we had.
Right.
We went back and actually looked at a ad that we posted too, but it was not for bond work, and changed a sentence at the bottom to make it more clear, all bond-related ads, if you've seen that, and it had that one that seemed more welcoming.
Right.
Versus the one that was not, all the ads come, are the same ads from J. E. Dunn.
Okay, so moving forward, we contact you.
And they were aware of it, we had a conversation with them about it, I don't know if you've found that ad specifically, we were looking for the one that you had.
We went back and looked, and, and from what we could find, our ads we're using for your project were consistent with what were used with the other ones.
We'll have to pull it out and share with you, because they were, they were starkly different.
Okay.
They were in the Kansas City Call, and it wasn't the electronic version, it was the, the print media, okay, thank you, we'll...
Yeah, if you got that, please.
It was the Call, I recall.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll look at it.
We'd be happy to look at it.
Okay, thank you, we will.
And my last question was, under the contact information from the page that you gave us, it has communications@kkps.org, who, who mans that website, I mean, the responses for those, do we get those, or do you guys get those?
Which website are you looking at, Dr. Yeager, are you looking at our website, that would be Melissa Beckford Peers?
The one?
Or the link to the J. E. Dunn?
The link to the J. E. Dunn to take me to that page, and then once I got there, I clicked, I had to click on fax.
To get all the projects?
Right, then contact, but it only had an email, it didn't have a phone number or anything associated with it, it just says, you know, contacts communications@kkps.org.
I don't believe that's ours.
We'll take a look and see what you're looking at, J. Dunn manages the website, that when you click on the link and you go to the website, it's got a list of all the projects, got a list of contacts, all the bid dates.
Right, and the dates is due, right, right.
That, that site is managed by J. Dunn, when you go onto our website, our homepage, that's all managed by us, so depending on where it's at, if it's ours, we need to update something, and if it's theirs, we need to have them update.
Right, because if they're emailing that link and, and no one's checking it, so, or have a phone number where someone can reach, because he said that it's plastered, maybe we can plaster it more on some of, some of the pages, so thank you for letting us know about that link being there.
Okay, we've got two other documents that I've presented tonight, both of these are just additional information as we've vetted through and, and reviewed bid, just click on the second one.
The second one here?
Yeah, as we've, as we've reviewed bids, this particular document, which is Outreach Efforts and Respondence, this basically just breaks down each work package, and, in, in a previous meeting, we were asked kind of how, how the bidders are learning about the project, so this is where we've documented. project. So this is where we've documented that. We've also indicated how many pre-bid meetings and how many outreach efforts that we were able to discuss this particular package on. So just some additional information as to the feedback we're getting from bidders on how they're hearing about your projects. So. And then the last document, there's no questions on this one. The two highlighted ones are the ones we talked about tonight.
So this is how they found out about it, and this is what we did.
Mm-hmm. So the last document is just the, the one we've been providing, which is bidder reasons for not bidding. And so, again, on the, on the header, the third line down says bidder reasons for not bidding. These are for work packages 78 and 13. So again, this is just feedback as we're bidding the project. And as we, at the end of the project, we'll, we'll make some follow-up calls to bidders that did not bid the project and ask them why they didn't. And there's a pretty overwhelming sense that we're getting from bidders, again, of the, of the, the work out there right now. And it's getting busy, and it's busy right now. So that'll probably be a common theme as we present to you guys over the next four months of bid results. It's just the, the market's getting busy. But I think we'll still be okay. So. Any questions on any of this?
Questions, comments?
Okay.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Dr. Mathers. Board vacancy report. Mr. Thompson?
Recommendation is that the Kansas City Board of Education accept the vacancy report as submitted by Walter Thompson, interim assistant superintendent of human resources, and is recommended by me, the superintendent of schools.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Good evening, Dr. Nguyen, Dr. Faust. Assistant meeting this evening is city folks who looks over this information on vacancies.
Good evening.
Good evening.
What you have before you is the updated October report for vacancies. In the last month, since we were last here, our vacancies continue to go down. Just to give you a review, we are now standing at 11 general education teacher vacancies. We have 18 special education vacancies. Those vacancies on the special education side, while they have not changed, we do have more applications that are coming through for some of those particular content areas. Still, little bit slow, but we are getting out to a variety of areas that are garnering some of those applications. Just very briefly, I'd like to just tell you a couple of things that we've done in the past month and what we're looking at going into the future. So individually, we have started as part of our recruiting program to get out in to our local area. We are meeting with instructional leaders on a weekly basis. And so we are in some of those instructional meetings where we are beginning to look at the master scheduling plan and things of that nature. And whereas I would tend to wait until after that had been set, being a part of those meetings and understanding at least what is needed more clearly on the front end is allowing us an opportunity to really be able to pick and choose possibly additional new places that we need to go to be ready to respond to those particular vacancies as they come up for the second semester. And again, as we get into the second semester, where we're looking at 2019, 2020. Additionally, we are going out and going into some of the schools and spending a couple of hours at each of those schools. And so, for example, earlier this week, I had an opportunity to be at one of the middle schools. And that principal was very gracious in terms of allowing me to actually sit in on special education classes, to just really see it from beginning to end, and what is going through in some of those classes, observing some of the other classrooms where, where we have math and science teachers and what they're really going through and, and what might be needed. And then that principal and their assistant principal took me to the side afterwards and really talked about some of the things that they're seeing just within the community around that particular school in terms of what the students are going through, what the student needs are, and therefore, what the teacher needs might be in terms of background, experience, things that they would hope to see in applications coming into the future. And last but not least, Kansas State Department of Education, I spoke with you last month about the fact that we've had two meetings with them where they graciously came to our facility to really show us how the licensing process works, how we can align some of the processes and licenses that maybe we don't use as frequently, that still puts a licensed teacher in front of a classroom, such as getting more into the CTE and understanding what type of backgrounds would fit those particular needs as we get more into Diploma Plus and taking care of that. The last thing I'll share with you is that because of some of the instructional, or instructions I've been given in terms of just moving recruitment forward, we are looking at more regional opportunities where several colleges would come together and see how that might allow us to have a bigger bang for our buck, as opposed to just strictly only going to one college campus at a time and another college campus at a time. So, for example, in November, there's a large teacher and certified convention that is happening. And who primarily comes to those conventions would be more of the experienced teachers who are going out and getting some additional experience under their belt in terms of training. And so this happens to be in St. Louis, Missouri, and we're going to be able to go to that. And right now, there are over 400 individuals who are already scheduled for that November opportunity. So while we're not going to be at the convention, the career fair's on that first day, we're going to go in and actually see some of these individuals set up booths, and then the convention is more so on for those teachers. Another opportunity that we just discovered is in Cincinnati, Ohio. Some of our counterparts that are here in the Kansas and Missouri area, when I have an opportunity to speak with them, one or two of them have had great success in going into the Ohio area. They have found that some of those candidates are willing to, both experienced and new teachers, are willing to consider areas outside of Ohio. So in March, there is going to be seven colleges that will come together, both some that are historically black colleges, some that are Hispanic-serving institutions, and some that are not. Some colleges that are not, they have a consortium, and they have this on an annual basis. So we're pretty excited about that fact, that that is another example of resources that we're finding as we isolate and determine what are our future needs and where are these quality teachers that may be needed for 2019, 2020, supporting CTE, supporting Diploma Plus. So those are some of the things that have been going on. Any questions?
Thank you.
Any more questions?
I would like to commend you on the continual fairs that you're having here. It's been really known throughout the community that when you're having those hiring fairs, how has that been as, as it relates to hiring? Has it been improved your success to get in people in the door quicker, or have you seen the results or turnaround to increasing where we need to be?
Well, so far, at least for the, the past two months, and I'll say since August, because I believe I reported on the summer events that we had, where we had the 10 career fairs and the results of those. But for the past month, because we started back with those, and we chose to focus on the multiple positions that may exist within certain departments. So, for example, we focused in the month of October on classified positions. In November, December, we'll have certified back on. And we have found that over 50% of those individuals are, that applicant, the individuals who either walk in or already had an appointment, 50% of them have been recommended for hire. And so we're pleased with that. We still need to increase the numbers of, of that group walking through, but it is going to take care at least and begin to make a bigger dent in some of those multiple hiring positions. I'm talking about paraprofessionals and nutritional services, because that need is ongoing. That doesn't really stop.
And the next question I had is, the art position was on there last month, and when I looked at the position online, it says it doesn't close until October 30th, but it was open August 5th. So could you tell me a little more about the closing of that? Are we waiting until October 30th to review applications for the art position, or is that something that's ongoing and we just not found anyone?
It's a couple of different things. When the art positions were advertised, there were multiple positions needed at multiple schools. And so it was Aug, it was open in August when we realized that we had that need for more elective courses. We were successful in hiring two individuals. We still have one left, so that's why you're seeing that it's still out there. We will advertise a particular closing date. Sometimes that's at the request of the hiring manager, simply saying, can you leave it open, you know, for at least a full month or sometimes two? We have other hiring managers who ask to just leave it open for 10 days and to take it down, and that they would then go through those applications. So some of it is supply and demand in terms of how many applications are really coming through for various areas.
Making sense.
And so that's why we're, at least now, just down to one art position that's still open. And that's why you see that date of the end of October, it going down. But we will go ahead and send those applications on. They will go ahead and set up interviews. The hiring manager will.
Well, thank you for letting me know, because that was one of the concerns earlier in the year, that, that they would sit out there and wait until a number of weeks, or until that closing date happened and wasn't forwarded on. So thank you for updating that process for us.
The, the other thing that we're doing in line with that is, we're now including, you may not have, we didn't start this practice until just a couple of weeks ago, but we're now including a line that says, applications will be considered immediately. So regardless of the, you know, date of close, if it's out there in the example that you brought up, at least the applicant will know whether they're not waiting until October 30th for something to close before they're ever considered. But there are some situations where maybe the first group of applications, individuals may have, you know, decided not to go any further themselves. Sometimes that's due to just a variety of personal reasons. And so therefore, we may have to go beyond certain dates that we put out there. So they'll get a new date.
Okay. Thank you.
So let, let me make sure I understand what you just said. Did you just say that recently you've had this cue to say your application will be responded to immediately?
No.
That's, that's just recent?
No. So in the job application portion, that doesn't mean that the emails are still not being generated as a person's application moves from one point to the other. That's still happening as we.
Right.
Brought to you a couple of months ago, when we explained the hiring process or the recruitment process. What we found out is that sometimes when we have a closed date that's out there longer than two weeks or three weeks, in order for the applicant to also know, there are a number of job ads that will say, applications won't be reviewed until after the closed date. And so we wanted individuals to know that in a, a number of our cases, applications will be reviewed as soon as applications come in.
Okay.
And are moved on to the hiring manager for interviews. So they won't think, oh, because of October 30th, it's been out there since August 5th, I won't get any kind of phone call or any kind of response until October 30th. And so when we realize that, we now try to put an extra line in the job posting.
Right. So I guess my question is, at what, how, how, how long has that been in place? Because we're, some of us are still getting those emails that I waited for four months and then got the no thank you le, letter. So how long has that been in place?
It's, it's at least been the, in September that I know that that portion started, where there's an additional line that goes in the job posting, so that they will know in the job posting. However, what I'm saying is, as soon as the application is opened, they are getting those generated emails.
Yeah. Well, I'm forwarding their names to Dr. Faust, so he can follow up. And just a comment, it, it's, it, it doesn't seem consistent to a process if one hiring manager, if I understood what you said, can pull an application after X amount of days, and another hiring manager, as you commented on the art position, can keep an, a position open another wide amount of days. That, that doesn't seem, Dr. Faust, consistent to a process.
So what sometimes could happen is, let's say that I put in a, a postal position, and I say 10 days, and I get 20 applicants, then I can pull it. But if it's, I go back and I check and I say, okay, it's 10 days, and I've only gotten five applicants, I need to increase it to make sure that I have a pool of applicants out there.
So at that point, the process, one would think, would say reopened, or, I mean, one would think that a process would have a set amount of time to be consistent. One would think.
And we, and that is the, the consistencies for pushing out the letter for those who received a letter in those four months. That was a discussion that we had, that after the position has been closed and those applicants were not selected, we go ahead and we send the information out.
Right.
So that's where individuals, if they got a letter and it was four months, should not have happened.
Correct.
But that's how we're having to clean up.
Yeah. And that's what I'm saying. In the, in the process of cleaning up, that inconsistency still seems to be a challenge to a clean process.
A clean.
Okay. So look forward to cleaning it up. All right. Thank you.
Dr. Nguyen, just to add to that, this art position has been pretty difficult to find. It really has been very difficult. And this is unusual for us to be short of an art teacher at this time of the year.
And, and I wasn't specifically speaking of the art position. I was using that as an example of a process that is consistent, that if I apply for the art position, the janitor, the whatever, that that position is open for X amount, and everybody knows it's open. And, or if then a number of applicants are not sufficient, then bells and whistles will say reopen, and I know I didn't get chosen, I resubmit, or those applications are still good. So I wasn't speaking directly about the art position. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. So you need a motion to accept? Dr. Faust?
Yes. So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the board vacancy report. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those nay. Motion passed. Reports to the superintendent.
So we now have the approval committee for the recommendations for the name of the new elementary school. Recommendation is that the Kansas City Board of Education approved the committee's recommendation for naming of the new Parker W.A. White Elementary School as submitted by Dr. Kelly Mathers, chief operating officer, and as recommended by myself, Charles Faust.
Dr. Nguyen, board members, Dr. Faust. Good evening again.
Good evening.
I'm calling my colleagues up. As we get started, I'm going to do a very brief introduction and have both Angela's, Ms. Wright, and Ms. Sharp, principals of William Allen White and Parker Elementary School, will be sharing in our presentation. I'm not even sure which order we're all going in, other than I know I'm going first. So. But as we get started, I'm going to talk briefly about the naming of this new elementary school, and then I'm going to introduce real quickly our committee members that were gracious enough to come here this evening. But as you're aware, we're combining those two elementary schools, William Allen White and Parker Elementary School, to the newly constructed, now what I'm referring to as West Elementary School, until the board makes a decision regarding the name. We followed the Board of Education's policy, the FC policy of naming a new facility. We reconvene the naming committee that seems to be getting a lot of work these days, but each one of those committees consists of different folks, because it represents each of the respective schools that are being combined. So we got folks together, wanted to let you know the committee members, a number of folks were invited. We had 12 folks that were showing. We had 12 folks that were showing up routinely to three meetings and I won't steal their thunder, but we had a board member representative and that was Ms. Jones. We had both principals represented at each meeting. We had five teachers, three from William Allen White, two from Parker. We had three parents, two from William Allen White and one from Parker, and a William Allen White community member. So it seemed like a nice group of folks that came in and participated. We appreciate all of the hard work of this committee. I can't say that enough. They really did work hard in a short period of time. This is a huge task to bring before all of you, to name a facility. So I know a number of our community and committee members are present. So do you want to stand up and come and surround your principals? And no, you just want to stand up? You can come up here and you can, thank you all so much. Yeah, come up and stand. This is not everybody, of course, but we appreciate the time that they've taken to do this. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Sharp, all right? And I, when you need to, I think we have a copy of the survey.
Hello, good evening, Dr. Nguyen, Dr. Faust, board. I am Angela Sharp, principal at Parker. I was part of our committee that convened over three times to name our new school. We had lots and lots of dialogue about what we felt the name should be, the mascots, the colors. We did come to a long list of options to start with. We had 18 names that we narrowed down to three. We started with quite a list of people names and then decided from some of the community members that we really wanted to kind of branch out from people names and focus elsewhere. So we did that, we narrowed it down to three. Those names, those three names were moved forward to the survey that we sent out via Melissa Bedford Fears. We put it on the Facebook page. We put out information in both of our schools respectively. We had about 459 respondents and that was split up over parents, students, staff and community that were, that did respond. The results of the survey are now on your screen, but we're also in your board docs. The vote led us to Legacy Elementary with 39.87% of the votes, West Park Elementary coming in second, and then Legends Elementary coming in third. Although the respondents did select Legacy Elementary by eight votes, the committee is recommending West Park Elementary for the name of the new school. We had, again, a lot of dialogue. There were very passionate views on both of the names, but again, we are coming together today to bring West Park and that is the coming of the two schools together. Ms. Wright?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Board members, president, Dr. Faust. Like Angela said earlier, it was a lot of dialogue. We really enjoyed the meetings of coming together and we're excited about our schools merging. We are, we did decide on the colors where we will take a color from William Allen White and a color from Parker. And the new colors that we voted in, decided on are red and gold. So that will be our new school colors. We allow our students to participate in selecting the mascot. There was a list, Panthers, we had 169 votes, Cardinals, 12 votes, Jaguars, 14, Phoenix, 111, and Pirates, three. And so we know that our colors are going to be red and gold and we know that we will be the Panthers. And so we are just moving forward, hoping that you guys can help us make that final decision, that we have a little bit of Parker and a little bit of William Allen White that will be built upon West to put that together and call the new school West Park. And so we're hoping that you agree.
Anybody else want to say anything? So with that, Dr. Nguyen, we will turn that over to the board for a decision. Again, the recommendation is West Park Elementary School from the committee.
It's your pleasure.
Can I make a motion?
You have to speak up so we can hear you.
Can I make a motion that we accept the West Park?
I second. Been moved and seconded to accept West Park as the name. Discussion. No, discussion.
Don't jump the gun yet.
Not Sooners.
Very enthusiastic.
There are no discussion? Ready for a vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
West Park it is. Thank you, Dr. Nguyen. Board, thank you.
Thank you.
Make sure you guys take a picture because you guys are so enthusiastic. Take a picture.
It was a fun committee, trust me. Thank you all.
The recommendation up next is that the Kansas City Board of Education accepts a grant from Wyandotte Health Foundation for creating a trauma-sensitive school district as submitted by Marcy Clay Assistant Superintendent, Lisa Garcia, Director of Student Services, and as recommended by myself, Dr. Charles Faust.
Good evening, board, Madam President, Dr. Faust.
Evening.
It's our pleasure to be before you to share our project, our initiative around creating trauma-sensitive and resilient schools. We're excited to be before you this evening. We wanted to point out and make sure that we are aligned with the board's priorities around safe and respectful learning environment and high expectations. We, I don't know, I need to start over. We wanted to, I didn't know as soon as I pushed that button it would start, so I apologize. But we wanted to start with a trailer video we made that captured our work and then we'll get into our presentation and also before use the PowerPoint and our complete narrative, which we will not cover, obviously, this evening, but we wanted you to have a copy of that. Thank you.
I think to be trauma-sensitive, we have to have an understanding of what trauma does to a child, how it impacts their learning. And that could look like a variety of things. For a lot of children, it looks like they're inattentive. It looks like they can't focus. It looks like they're fidgeting. And it's because their brain has been impacted by trauma.
We started working with KCK Public Schools four years ago. It started as a trauma-sensitive school training. At that time, it was information only and we were trying to get out in the community and share what we knew and what we had learned from trauma.
Teachers, counselors, whoever was in the trainings, were understanding the science, but they wanted to know, what do I do now? And so that's when it turned to a different kind of project, creating trauma-sensitive schools. And our initiative is the answer to that. It's all of the science put together with the practice paired together. So this initiative then evolved into something much larger than I think that initially I imagined. We're making sure that we're addressing how we were going to provide the resources, not only for our parents, how we respond or how I leverage partnerships, but how we were going to build capacity and empower those that were seeing students and parents all the time, principals, teachers, support staff. Then teachers or support staff have the ability to meet the students' needs where they are so that we can develop the skills that students need and empower them so that when they are experiencing any incidences of trauma or a setback or something that happened that particular day, they know how to enter into that classroom to identify what they need so that they can continue to learn.
So we just wanted to give a bit of a taste about what is to come and we're going to talk a little bit about that work. Part of our leadership team, we've been working, as you heard in the video, the last four years, preparing for really some feedback that you have given us about what we're going to do different to support our students, to encourage their engagement in learning and how we're addressing some of those behaviors in school. I also want to acknowledge that Randy Lopez is also in the audience. We're going to speak about, he's right there, we're going to speak about our grant. Amanda's going to speak to that following James Roberson, Vice President of KVC Hospitals.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
So I, number one, I appreciate the opportunity to come in front of you and the opportunity to do trauma-sensitive work in Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools. Many of you are familiar with KVC and KVC Health Systems. If you're not, we're one of the largest nonprofit human service organizations and we were born right here in Wyandotte County and we still operate less than two miles down the street. Where we've been working on for the last 10 years is addressing trauma and adverse childhood experiences in our community, in the greater Kansas City community, nationally and even internationally, with innovation and strategy that otherwise wouldn't be brought to the table. We don't bring a model and I want to state that very clearly. There are models out there that you can buy off the shelf and KVC, and we don't prescribe to that. We're not going to spend years writing a book so that we can sell the book and then promote it. Our goal in this project and every other project that we do is that we come in with the information and with the science. And neuroscience on the mental health side has drastically changed the way that we approach our work over the last 20 years. And neuroscience has taught us something about adversity. And one of the quotes, and I'm stealing it from Alive and Well in STL out of St. Louis, is that toxic stress makes us sick. And as a community, if we take ownership of that, just like Alive and Thrive has done in Wyandotte County, just like the Wyandotte Health Foundation and Paces in Wyandotte County, if we can step in and address that, then overall, we can impact the determinants of health in our communities. And so our theory of change overall relies around that. We're going to go out and work with the Student Services Group to identify what are the best practices and what does the science say around student learning and the impact of adversity on healthy brain development and then bring that into the strategies within the district. So KVC was, we were fortunate to participate in a group called the Change in Mind Initiative, which was a four-year project where we received training from Harvard Center for the Developing Child, Alberta Family Wellness, and the Frameworks Institute. And so the approach that we're going, that we want to bring to Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools is connecting the dots between communication science, how do we change the general understanding about trauma and adversity so that families don't say, trauma doesn't impact us, that impacts somebody else? So that everyone within the district really understands that adversity is occurring day in and day out, but there is something we can do about it. And then neuroscience, and we've already done some training with the counselors and with the administrators in the district. As we mentioned in the video, we have done a total of about 50 hours to this point of training just on content and content delivery. So the next step is how do we put that into practice within the schools? And then finally is the implementation science. So as we go through each school, what do we know out there nationally that's most effective? There are some school districts that have done similar projects that we will be able to pull from. Kansas City, Kansas would be one of the largest districts to do a district-wide implementation. And so some of this will be developmental so that we will also learn in a district this size and an environment and funding as it is in the state of Kansas, how do we make this work as we go through? So our overall plan right now, again, we've been doing this three to four years, but as part of this grant and our work with Wyandotte Health Foundation, we're planning out the next three years. And first, we will develop training that is available online in the Kansas City, Kansas Training System so that it's owned by the district and will live within the district. So we won't be going out and purchasing something that somebody else has the rights to, the district will own the rights. And then, beginning next year, we will identify clusters. And so high schools and then their feeder schools and then work within that school group, provide a week-long seminar during the summer so that we can translate all of that communication science, all the neuroscience and all the implementation science. And then for that next year, work within that group cluster on their own implementation plans. A project this size is going to cost more than what we currently have funding for. But our implementation of the information, the science, the training and beginning to adjust practices within school is going to be, allow us to leverage and get more funding. And I know we have talked to several groups to this point and Wyandotte Health Foundation has been 100% supportive of helping us leverage to get the funding over the next three years. And then finally, our outcomes, in the same, your same goals match ours. Ultimately, we want the students to graduate from Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools to prosper, first and foremost. To do that, we want to use trauma-sensitive schools to impact how children are experiencing their education. If they're coming to school and stress is toxic in their body and impacting their ability to learn, we want to put practices in place to address that. So our goals in our long term is looking at staff knowledge, education and the ability to engage in that work. We want to reduce suspensions and office visits and then reduce absences and then overall reduce teacher and staff turnover as well. And to give some feedback, there are projects in other school districts that have done similar work and seen similar outcomes. So now I'll hand it over to Amanda to discuss the funding.
Good evening, board and Dr. Faust.
Good evening.
I'm going to tell you a little bit about the grant that we received from the Wyandotte Health Foundation. A little bit about the foundation. The Wyandotte Health Foundation supports projects, programs that reduce the incidence of ACEs and trauma and assist families experiencing ACEs and trauma. In March, KCKPS along with KVC responded to a request for proposals for improving skills and tools of nonprofits to address trauma. And that was put out by the Wyandotte Health Foundation. The district along with KVC requested the entire allotted amount for everyone of $75,000. We knew to begin this work, we were going to need a large chunk of money, so we just went for it. Luckily, it did pay off. Our proposal was not only accepted, but now has an opportunity to be a special three-year initiative with the Wyandotte Health Foundation. The Wyandotte Health Foundation has agreed to fund $175,000 for the first year of this project and $175,000 each year for two additional years should all requirements be met. The first grant period starts this October and goes until October 2019 and we've already received our first check of $43,750.
All right.
The grant will allow us to hire a coordinator for the project that will work closely with KCKPS and KVC, provide stipends for behavioral health liaisons, train leadership, develop curriculum and web-based training. For year two and three funding, the foundation will be looking for demonstrated progress and leadership support. As James mentioned, the total project cost at full scale is just under $1 million over three years. And we are working on additional partnerships and responding to upcoming grant opportunities to secure additional funding for this project.
Okay, so to this point, and Amanda mentioned quite a bit, but we have spent this time up until funding has begun, out in the community and talking to as many people as we can. So just in the last couple of months, we presented the concept at three major conferences. One in Manhattan, Kansas, at the Kansas Behavioral Health Conference, which got a lot of really good support from the Community Mental Health Center. Followed up with a meeting today with Paces and their willingness and to engage and participate in the project. We also presented in Wichita at the Safe and Supportive Schools where our approach was compared to many of the other major school districts in the state who were presenting on similar topics and we were able to go and discuss what was working for them and what could work for us. And then third, the KVC group was also able to present it as part of our conference in San Francisco at the Adverse Childhood Experience National Conference just a few weeks ago. Okay, so, and this is not a bribe, but I do want to point out, so KVC Health Systems, we run by a set of values and we consider ourselves a value-driven organization and a mission-driven organization. And so each year of our six values, we identify a community partner or an individual or a foster family or an adoptive family that we feel like match our values. And so for 2018, we nominated the Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools for an award and our board selected the Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools as our partner and want to provide you with a value award for authenticity and compassion.
Well, good for you.
We look forward to approving the recommendation.
We look forward to approving the recommendation and to any questions or feedback that you may have for us as well.
Let me have just one question. This is because I don't, I don't know, and I have no problem admitting I don't know. Legislature passed, and let's say, time goes so fast now, maybe three or four years ago about Jason Flack's suicide training. So while it's not, while it was previous to your involvement here, how do those, do they stand alone? Do they start merging together? How does it, how do you make it effective?
Yeah. So, so when we think about trauma-informed care and trauma-sensitive schools, there's really three separate approaches. And so one is, how do children and adults interact in an environment like this? In other environments, it's adults and adults. But the experience for the child when they come to school, is it stress-inducing? That's number one about trauma-informed care. Number two, which is to this point, is that in our, in the field of mental health, we believe addressing adverse childhood experiences and what we call toxic stress reduces disease. So when we talk about suicide prevention, what we're talking about is a mental health condition that has either gone untreated, or because of environmental factors gets pushed to the point, and the resources aren't there and aren't available. So we approach it in two ways. And in our organization, we operate psychiatric hospitals, and I've worked in our psychiatric hospital for 14 years and thousands of kids that are suicidal. When we approach suicide prevention, we do it in two ways. Number one, let's prevent the illness and disease to the point that we can every single day. And then two, when a child is experiencing symptoms, that's where this trauma-sensitive school project will align with the pilot project, which brought over 40 social workers into the district, to say, "We didn't prevent it." There was enough events and occurrences in this child's life that now we're dealing with depression that's either unmanaged, undermanaged, or not managed at all. And so now we're going to engage the behavioral health system. So it aligns with the project, but it's not the project in and of itself. So a trauma-sensitive school project doesn't address all behavioral health concerns, but in partnership with other projects that are in place, we can have a huge impact.
So there is the possibility of, of a separate training, standing alone, when it could or could not work together?
Correct. So they do absolutely work together. And my hope is that anyone that walks out of my training understands exactly how it connects to behavioral health in schools and mental health treatment.
Well, let me ask this.
Yeah.
I'm not probably asking it correctly. Since it is mandated by the state and it's only, I think, an hour, I don't think it's very large, which is ridiculous. Does that one hour take place in isolation? I guess that's my real question.
That's a really good point. Yeah, and I think, could you attach and connect this concept of trauma-sensitive schools and suicide prevention together? The answer is yes. What we also want, in the discussion when we're talking about summer seminars with specific groups, I know that the other groups will still have to have the training. And so not every school would get it every year. Now, in the discussion of online training, I would have to hand that over to Lisa to talk about, is it something that could be built?
I don't think the provisions allowed online training. I don't remember, but I don't think it did.
I think the provision allows we have to have the one-hour mandated training, but to, Dr. Faust reminded us, and it is our charge, to make sure that we're aligning the work. And while we may be obligated to provide the mandated one-hour training, we will be intentional to align the work so that it doesn't feel or appear to be a separate event. So while we have to have the training, we will be intentional to establish the expectation, the standard, and help in our delivery to align all of the work that we're doing. So while we're talking about prevention, it should be directly tied to our project and the overall work that we're doing.
Okay, thank you. Other questions coming?
Yeah, I have a question. Is there an assessment phase in terms of, if you're going to provide this training, how do you go about focusing on the students that need, need that kind of training?
So I think there's, there's two parts of that. One is, we are taking a whole-school approach. And so the approach for trauma sensitivity, we believe, and it applies to everyone. And so if there is a universal approach for every student that walks in that works for a child that has been exposed to trauma, it will work for the child that hasn't been exposed. And so there isn't an assessment phase where we'll be providing trauma assessments to each and every student. We will be asking questions, and we will be learning about what is the exposure like in a school. But individually, it won't be mental health treatment, so we won't know specifically one student has experienced this.
I got you, I got you. What about teachers? Would they be going, undergoing training too?
That's a really good point. And so the teachers will get the bulk of the summer seminars.
Okay.
And part of that, and we just met with Paces today on this topic, so part of that is, is self-care. So in any environment, if we start talking about trauma and toxic stress and adverse childhood experiences, the adults know that. They know what it is, they've experienced it themselves, and so it will come up. And so we are working on a strategy with Paces to add additional support for teachers as we provide that training, that they can be available to provide more self-care and individual safety plans for staff and staff members in the schools.
Thank you.
My question involves the community. Parents and teachers and students have asked for that wraparound support. We know that a child who experiences trauma, something is going on in that home, but what are we going to do to provide that trauma care for their parents who are going through that situation and doing the best they can, but they need additional tools because they do not know how to get treatment? So their child is getting treatment, the teacher's getting treatment, but when that parent shows up, what are we doing? Or how can we get to that parent so we can make sure that that whole household is taken care of?
Thank you, Dr. Jaeger. We appreciate that feedback. It was as if you were in our meeting today. So we have been talking about that layered approach. What we're doing primarily to impact student achievement with our students, but there's also community initiative, and we know that we need to touch our community and our families holistically. So Alive and Thrive is initiative, that's why we met with Paces today. It was being led or driven through the Health Department, and now that work will now be under the umbrella of Wyandotte Inc. And so we have been in conversation about revisiting the parent workshops, things that we'll be able to provide around parenting, their self-care, and working with students that exhibit any behaviors or symptomatic of trauma. So we are looking at all of that because if we are identifying a common language at school, but we haven't touched the parents, we know that is part of the work that we need to engage in. So we will be part of the steering committee with Alive and Thrive under Wyandotte Inc. And we just met with Wyandotte Inc. again to talk about that self-care for our staff, but also for our parents and our families, a caregiver.
Great. The other question, final question I had was the videos. Will videos be available to parents? Will we be able to go out to that site or see them on social media so that those who need it and may not come in, but see the video, will be able to have that resources and something to think about?
Absolutely. Part of the video really is from feedback we have, at least I have observed from the board. So making, this is just a trailer, but more videos to come for staff, community members, working with our partnership with Alive and Thrive, and for our staff as well, so they continue to have access. And as the project evolves continually, to revise those videos as it pertains to our work and the movement in our initiative.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you very much. So now we need action.
To approve.
Did I hear a motion?
Did you say?
She moved to approve.
Oh, second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the grant for creating a trauma-sensitive school district.
Absolutely.
Discussion? On the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay? Motion passed. Thank you, next.
Next item is that the Kansas City Board of Education approved the proposal for purchase of active shooter policy for the 2018-19, as submitted by Dr. Kelly Mather, Chief Operating Officer, and as recommended by myself.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
This is Scott Graves, a VP with Aon, our broker who delivers our insurance packages. Those of you at the last board meeting got to listen to him on the phone as he was traveling to St. Louis, I think, or somewhere east. Wanted to bring this topic back, and I'm going to turn it over to Scott in a moment to address some questions. But just as a reminder to the board, back in June, when we brought our full insurance package, all of the different policies, this was just a topic that has been surfacing, at least across the state of Kansas, and I imagine nationally, unfortunately. It is an active shooter policy. It is not something that we have done historically. I think it's fairly new. Scott can speak to that among school systems, but school systems have been exploring maintaining this kind of policy coverage for schools due to the unfortunate act of school violence and things that have been happening across the country. So this particular policy, I'll allow Scott to kind of maybe do a quick overview again just because I think it was difficult to hear. When we were over the phone, the board had requested that you would come back, so I appreciate you taking the time to do that. He can review that. If it is the board's pleasure to move forward, we have outlined the cost of the policy, and it would be a prorated policy amount for the current year, running from November until the end of June. Again, if the board so pleases that way, the next year, you'd have the full policy along with all of your other insurance packages. So with that, we'll just talk briefly, or have Scott talk to you briefly about the policy itself.
Thank you, Dr. Mather. Appreciate it. Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Faust, members of the board. I appreciate your time again. Apologize for the, for the issues with the audio the last time during my travels, but wanted to come back and answer any questions and share with you some of the information so that I could, could provide you as much education as possible with regard to this new type of coverage. If you look at the, oh yeah, sure, thank you. If you look at just some of the data that we've compiled and that we, that we've learned from the FBI, there have been more than 250 active shooter events in the U.S. since 2000 through 2017. That's not including the ones that we've seen just since the first of this year, which we've seen a few more during that time, unfortunately. We've had a, since then, we've had more than 130 killed and 593 wounded. Thirty percent of those have taken place in school districts and in municipal buildings. So they're governmentally more app than private, privately-held companies in many cases. That would include post offices and the like. Just another graph, 799 were killed in the 250 incidents, 1,418 were wounded. That's not including the shooters themselves or the ones brandishing the weapons. That's the graph that shows the breakdown involved. It also includes houses of worship, healthcare facilities, all very minor when you consider the school districts are pre-K to 12, so it includes the full district from just under 15%. Institutions of higher education at 6%, and then the governmental 7.2% and the military at 2.8%. One of the reasons why this came about was, was because most insurance, well, no insurance policies as they currently stand in the general liability policies cover intentional acts. And as a result of that, there is no coverage for an active shooter event in a general liability policy as carriers provide it now. Beasley, the carrier that came out with this first, has provided this as more an event-type of trigger as opposed to a liability-type of trigger. So it's not based on whether the school is, or the district is at fault. It's strictly a benefit or an event-type of trigger that allows for these benefits to be provided to the people who were involved. And so there's a different trigger. It's a little lower trigger so that you can expand that to members that have been involved and affected by an active shooter event. It doesn't cover damages arising out of law enforcement activity, which obviously would be involved in a situation like that, or riot, civil commotion, or mob activity. It also wouldn't cover a business interruption for the school in that event because the event itself wouldn't be covered, whereas the other would provide some of that. There is no coverage for crisis call centers, there's no post-event counseling, there's no pre-risk assessment of locations to determine what your risk looks like before an event takes place to help you prepare in such an event, and legal costs may be excluded in that situation. So in the active shooter coverage, it provides first and third-party coverage. So it provides coverage for the district, it also provides coverage for the people who are involved, the students, anybody who's at the, at the facility at the time that it occurs. There's a pre-risk assessment of locations that occurs within the first 45 days after the policy is purchased. We set this, the limits up at 250,000 per occurrence based on the way the current Kansas Tort Claims Act is written, at 500,000 per the district's responsibility under the State of Kansas Act. Currently, we are not aware of any case law that would indicate that, that the Tort Claims Act would, would be involved, or that it would, it would write precedent over this, but we're going on that precedent right now that since you have no coverage, 250,000 is better than zero, therefore, that's the recommendation. What we've also got is a separate aggregate limit that we have options. What we've noticed is, or seen in the, in the historical data is that the likelihood of another event happening at the same location is very rare, so that the aggregate doesn't need to be as high. It's really the event cost per that, per that one event that makes the difference. And so the 250,000 is what, what we've come to at this point. We can go to higher limits, we can seek those if the board so chooses. Some of the other things that it covers is that there's a broad definition of weaponry. So any type of weapon that's brandished would be considered a triggered event. It doesn't have to be used, it can just be shown, and that could trigger the event under the policy for crisis counseling, post-event discussion with students or whoever. They also have the, the active plan for the seminar that's provided within the 45 days, post-event counseling, there is business interruption included. So a number of different things that aren't liability-related, just event-related, that would help with the, the cost for anybody who's involved. We did go to, Beasley is the, is the carrier for this. And as, as we've looked through this over time, we're finding that there are more carriers that are coming out with something. They were the first, and this is an early phase of it. It will evolve over time, just as most coverages do. The one that we went to was the Option 1, which is the 250,000 occurrence with a million-dollar aggregate for all schools, a deductible of 10,000 per event. The annual premium is 28,556, but the prorated, as per Dr. Mather's note, was from November 1 to July 1, it would be 19,715. That's based on FTE student listing or estimate at the time. So, and that's right, just under 22,000, 21,000, some change. So, and, and we originally came in, it was at 30,000 because we had a little higher number. We went back and tinkered with that and got it down a little bit for that, so. Questions?
That's it.
I have quite a few of them.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you said any kind of weapon, so it could be a baseball bat, it could be a knife, anything that creates a safety hazard.
Right. Any, any type of a threat that occurs, right.
Okay. And you just said the premium's based on the student enrollment count, not on the number of properties or buildings?
Correct, correct.
Does this cover all district-owned properties, including stadiums, vacant land?
Yes.
And we have to provide the list to you to provide to Beasley of all our properties and everything?
Correct.
Okay. Does it involve our school buses?
It does. It includes transportation.
And what about our library facilities? I forgot to ask about that, I think.
Absolutely.
It covers, okay. Will it cover us on district-sponsored events off property, like when our kids go to play at a home game at one of the universities, or they're out at a track meet? Is it going to cover?
At another district or within the district?
Another facility, well, like our softball teams play in the park, city parks. If something happens there, it's a district-sponsored event.
Right. That's a good question. I, I think I would need to get that clarified because they're going with the fact that if you purchased it, it would be for your district and your locations. That might be a situation where the park district, if it's not a part of that, would have had to purchase their own for it to be covered. I'll clarify that and let you know.
And what if our employees are out on district business and they're involved in something like that?
If they're, again, if they're off the district premises, that entity probably would have to purchase that coverage more than likely, but I can clarify that as well.
Okay. And the million-dollar aggregate, is that per policy period, like? And the million-dollar aggregate, is that per policy period, like per year, or is that a lifetime total payout?
That's for policy year.
For policy year, okay. That's it.
Great. Any other questions?
I got a question.
Yes, Mr. Brown.
You talked about the pre-assessment 45 days after. Could you explain that? What's that about?
The carrier will have experts that will come out and actually, and probably do a tabletop or desktop version too, but they likely would come out and look at your facilities and make recommendations on ways that you might be able to provide more secure options for students. They're not necessarily mandated, but they're just suggestions. It's like a loss control visit that you might get from a property adjuster or property loss control group for properties to say, how can we be safe or how can we keep losses from occurring?
Okay. Is this, you know, this price looks really good to me, but I'm not sure that we've talked to any other carriers, have we?
At the time, no, because these were the first. It's a very brand-new type of product. As I indicated, since we've started talking about this going back to May, we've started to get more feedback, but nobody has come out fully with something yet. Now, I can go back and check again because, as we know, it will evolve through the marketplace as more carriers get interested in it.
Okay, so if that's the case, what, to what extent, or how, man, how liable are these schools who do not, how are they dealing with the liabilities with this lawsuits then? Be it Florida, doesn't matter.
I can't speak to that, Dr. Winn, specifically, because that's really not come out, other than the fact that there is no insurance coverage under the types of plans under the general liability. And I don't know how the state of Florida is with that, but it's not, if they consider the school to be at fault, I don't know how their laws in that state apply. They may have something that they do, but I can't, they might have this too, I'm not sure.
And I can't remember when the University of Texas shooting at Austin. I don't know if that was the first one, but a very early one, and it could have been 25 years ago now.
I think it was in the early 2000s, maybe, yeah.
Yeah. So I guess, I need to understand, but I understand, but I need, I guess, just for you to spell it out. So the industry gets together and says, we're not covering these types of situations?
No.
And then 25 years later, when it becomes Virginia Tech, blah, 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 all of a sudden, oh, there's a new type of policy because you no longer, were you covered under those old policies?
Policies evolve through time with regard to language. Cyber, for example, used to be, back in the 70s and 80s, there, when computers were starting to come out, the general liability policies had language that could protect for certain computer attacks or computer types of things.
Okay, but let's bring it back to, there is a person, a student, a teacher that gets shot in the school. 30 years ago, how was that handled? Somebody paid somebody.
I can't, I can't speak to 30 years ago. I'm not, I mean.
Okay, five years ago.
Five years ago, I mean, other than, the teachers would have workers' compensation. That's where the benefit would apply for the teachers. The students, again, depending on the state law, if they have remedy against the school or not, it's a matter where the school has to pay for it out of their budget, but typically there hasn't been coverage for that.
So if the parents sued the cop?
There might be student accident policy.
But if the parents sued the school district, the school district insurance did what? Five years ago.
It's difficult to say because every case is going to be different. I will tell you generally that they likely would not have had coverage for it in most instances. But again, every case is different. Every situation is different, so it's tough for me to say anecdotally that one is covered or not covered.
There was some, some insurance would have covered something.
Well, so what would have happened, and likely what would happen now, if there was some sort of negligence claim against the school district for their conduct, then that might have been covered to some degree under an errors and omissions policy. There would be a reservation of rights without question. And so if the allegation was, so, let me give you an example. We get, say we get sued in that context, some kid gets shot at school, heaven forbid, right? And so the lawsuit that might get brought back against the school district would be for not protecting, being negligent in our care and protection of that student.
Let's get a real example that the detectors weren't functioning.
Okay. So that would be an example of why you might assert some sort of negligence claim or negligence theory. Now, the other part of that lawsuit would inevitably be, and part of the defense to the lawsuit, would be you had an intentional action by some third party. In other words, we can't be responsible for criminal behavior by somebody bringing a weapon and shooting somebody, right? And so there arguably would not be coverage for the actual incident itself unless you had some sort of other trigger for the event that was some sort of negligence theory as to how you got there. So there might or might not have been coverage, depending on how the lawsuit and how the facts played out.
Okay, but at the end of the day, if the court ruled in favor of the parent, what insurance, how would the school district pay the bill?
Taxpayers.
Out of what, general fund?
Now, there's a special statute that allows the school districts, if they get sued in a lawsuit, to initiate a levy to pay for uninsured expenditures. That's, at the end of the day, that's who would pay. So the insurance protects and insulates against that.
So, go back to you, sir, then, if that is the case in Kansas, and it appears that it may be the case in other states, all of these schools that shootings are happening so regularly that it's mind-boggling are, and do not have the active shooter policy, are having to levy their taxpayer?
They may very well be, yes.
I have a question. Have we compared to see what our policy currently covers to compare to what's offered here?
You've got an E and O policy, or I don't know if it's E and O or?
E and O, yeah.
Directors and officers are kind of interchangeable, which covers errors and omissions by your employees, which I assume would be the primary coverage in a situation. General liability policy probably has an exclusion, I assume, for an intentional act. I don't have the policies in front of me, and they're thick, and so I'm kind of guessing about what the coverage would be under them. So there would be some degree of potential coverage if there was an allegation of an error or an omission on behalf of a school employee or the school district in connection with that, that would provide presumably cost of defense under a reservation of rights letter saying, we're not going to probably be responsible for the damages at the end of the day, but we might provide some coverage for the defense cost if the lawsuit's pled correctly by the plaintiff's attorney. Same thing would fall under the Tort Claims Act, so you're going to have limitations under the Tort Claims Act, but you also have potential exclusionary actions under the Tort Claims Act where you got both limitations on what the exposure to the district might be under the Tort Claims Act, but at the same time, you have exceptions that would exclude things like malicious conduct, intentional torts, things of that nature. So again, you could have some uncovered exposures without question under the current law and under the current policies. It's just, you know, these kinds of intentional criminal conduct are not typically things that are covered by insurance, so when they happen, you're typically stuck with coming up with the money to cover them. I mean, that's the best way to put it. I don't know how else to say it.
Okay.
Yeah, Dr. Goheen's correct, or Mr. Goheen's correct. The other thing about this type of a coverage is that it does provide the first-party coverages for the district with the event analysis, the post-counseling, post-event counseling and things, the funeral expenses without admitting liability. So it's another form of coverage from a first-party perspective as opposed to a third-party liability perspective. So it kind of changes the dynamic a little bit.
And to be fair, those kinds of things are not covered under any policy that you have. So things like post-event counseling, that's not something to be covered under any policy that I'm aware of that you have currently.
Okay. Next, does it align with our officers? Has Chief Horn, just like the assessment for pre-risk assessment for our locations, Chief Horn had described how there's already been an assessment done and things of that nature. How would that partner with our current officer, or how does that look for training or programs set up to make sure that everybody's in the same loop, on the same page, so that our officers and security guards are all in the same loop?
I would need to check with the carrier because it'll be their representative who would come out, and I can determine through asking them what the intent is, or if we can include the officers of security as part of that assessment. In terms of alignment, I think that they're looking, I mean, I'm not sure what the total assessment is that the security officers or the police, the SROs do, but I think we can talk to the carrier and make sure that we're including them in the process, or at least providing them the information from what's been found.
Okay. And then the last question was the deductible. When we're talking about November to July and what's covered, is there any, once we get the final numbers from Dr. Mather, then will that be the final price we pay based upon student count of those final numbers, or will it just be this set amount that you've been presented today? Because you said it fluctuated a little bit, so.
Well, it did when we initially got the first quote because we had a different student count, but we went back to clarify the student count, and that's when it came down. So this number's the most current number.
The student count was significantly different. He had nearly 30,000, so we had to bring it down to closer to where we're at now. So I anticipate there'll be fluctuation once you have the final lot, but probably not significant enough to change the premium.
Okay.
Right.
So if we purchase this, which takes it till July, there's a chance that when you do our insurance, big insurance package, there may be more agencies to pull from for a policy.
Correct. We'll do a greater marketing to see if any others have joined the fray and if they're interested in quoting so that we can have competition between them.
But this 19,000 will protect us between November and July 1st?
Absolutely.
And then we can reassess whether we want to continue purchasing it?
Correct.
Or whether we find, you find us a better deal?
Correct.
Or maybe everyone else is higher, and this is the best?
Yes, and there may be, as we move forward, as I said about our policies evolving, your current GL carrier may change things too and start adding, you know, we don't know. Those things are always subject to change as we move forward. We always look at that as we go in to make sure that we're not duplicating coverage for you.
Okay. So how long would it take you to find out whether our students who then play at a different venue, either violin or football, if an active shooter injures one of our students there, this policy would not cover them?
I could probably have something to you by the end of the week.
Okay.
I just need to make a call to get clarification. I'm, I've got conflicts tomorrow, but I'll be back on Thursday and follow up on it.
Because that happens, I mean.
I have a question. And this is for Dr. Mather. I'm on the teacher negotiation committee, and I recognize that we're trying to have some type of equal compensation for them. My question is, where will the funding come from in order to get this policy? Because one of the things that we've been talking to them about of how limited we are with funding, with money, and I just see this as another expenditure, but we need to consider them as well.
Absolutely, it is another expenditure. I think that's a great question. I have a line item under the business line, under my budget, that we utilize for instruction. And I'm trying to describe what the line is. It's an instructional line item that we use to outfit classrooms, and we pay for furniture for schools. I would recommend to the board to consider the 19,000 from that, if you so choose to afford. It has to come out of an existing line like that. There's a couple of other options that we could look at, but.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Scott, you guys are brokers. Are you the brokers?
Yes.
Well, I personally would need to know about the coverage of our students at other venues because that covered, we cover all athletic, all student activities.
I could find that for you and get back with Dr. Mather so that she can share that with you.
Okay.
Absolutely.
That's my comment. Other comments? It's your pleasure.
Would we want, would it be acceptable to the majority of the people if we moved to accept it as long as it covers our children at other events? Is that possible to do that? Or do we need to take it as it is?
Table it.
I think we could table it for, if you say, today is Tuesday, Friday, we would know.
I'd like to do.
And then we could do a telephone vote or something?
We have a special meeting coming up, don't you?
Yeah, oh, next week, yeah.
Yeah.
Don't you wait and get the information and make your decision.
Yeah, there we go. I like that.
I mean, that's one piece of information. Is there, are there other pieces of information?
I just wanted to know about the alignment to our current, alignment to our current policy.
I move we table it till our next special meeting.
Right. Their second.
Second.
Second, yeah.
Moved and tabled, moved and segmented, discussion. That's one piece of information. Specifically, the other piece of information, are you clear?
In terms of alignment with your other policies, are you talking about what we were doing with the security and the analysis, or?
Or what we currently have coverage for, meaning what does our policy say as it relates to situations such as this? Because Mr. Goheen spoke about some things that he thought may be in there, but if we just had a little clarification.
What I can tell you is, I'm pretty sure you don't have any coverage right now that would be the same as this. This is an, I suspect this is an uncovered area. I would ask him to confirm that because I don't know that for sure. You have some other coverages that might come into play in a situation where you have a violent act that occurs at school. For example, your workers' compensation coverage would cover employees who get injured in those situations. I don't think that's an overlap of this policy. That is just another coverage that would be in place. If you had an officer involved in a situation, a shooting incident, and the officer had some exposure as well, I think you've got an officer policy.
Yes.
For our police officers that might provide some coverage, but again, it's not the same coverage as this. It would only protect the officer that's involved in that situation. And you have an errors and omissions policy that would likely provide some degree of protection from some sort of, some types of claims, depending upon how those claims are characterized by whatever lawyer brings the lawsuit. But you wouldn't know that until you got the actual lawsuit filed by the individual. So, and whatever it's worth, I think your deductible on the 100 grand?
On?
On the, you know?
50 or 100, I, yeah.
It's 100.
Off the top of my head.
It's at least 100. So you've got 100 grand deductible on your E and O coverage. So this triggers from day one, from right from the outset, so you've got a gap there where, you know, gap's the wrong word because you're covering different things. But understand, this would, as I understand it, this covers from the moment the incident occurs.
Yeah, correct.
Without a requirement of proving liability. So this just is, the shooting happens, I assume we turn the coverage in, and the next day we have people out here working on the post-incident counseling, and that piece of it's already starting to be covered right out of the gate, is how I understand it.
Yes.
Well, we want to be thorough.
Absolutely.
Because this is, this is not an uncommon occurrence, which is frightening.
Agreed.
So, other discussion points. Been moved and seconded to table pending further clarification to be voted upon at our next special meeting, which is within?
30th.
The 30th, 30th of October.
And I should point out that the pricing's based on November 1st, but you can make your decision for whatever date.
Right.
So there's no stringent timetable, so if you need to discuss it further, we're happy to do that, and you can choose any date, and then we just go from there, we pro rate it a little further.
That's good to know. Thank you. We appreciate it. Any other readiness? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Look forward to hearing from you. Next.
Recommend that the Kansas City, I'm sorry, that the Kansas City Board of Education accept the first quarter substitute staffing report as submitted by Walter Thomas and our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, as recommended by myself, Charles Faust.
Hello again.
Madam President, Dr. Faust, I'm Walt Thompson from HR. Today, our team wants to bring you up to date on our substitute division. In our last presentation, we made a point four mistake, and we want to correct that. Mrs. Stephanie Pepper will guide us through the first three and a half months presentation.
So actually, it was a point four, but it was the way that it was rolled out. So I think there was a misunderstanding on the side of the board, and the side of the schools, what they were doing in their office, so we wanted to make sure that it was a clean report.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Nguyen, Dr. Faust, and the board.
Good evening.
I am Stephanie Pepper, Human Resource Advisor for Substitute Services. We would like to take the opportunity today to share our year-to-date substitute report and clarify the information that was shared during the September 25th board meeting. The information we will discuss this evening is based upon data from August 1st to August 12th, so the end of the first quarter. Before we get into the details, like I said, I want to clarify the information that was shared. As you may recall, we had talked about having 248 active subs and reported an average fill rate from July 1st to September 21st as 90%. Upon further review, we'd like to clarify that the actual number is 89.6%. That does include all of our day-to-day absences, as well as our vacancies. So now, looking at our first quarter, we wanted to run data as of, like I said, August 1st through October 12th. You may be asking yourself, why August 1st versus July 1st as a start date, as we previously reported? This is to ensure that our numbers are most accurate, and so we decided to go from August 1st versus July kind of one. And so this year, to date, so from August 1st to October 12th, we have had 6,569 absences that require a sub. We have filled 4,000, or 5,384 of those positions for a fill rate of 82%. And then we also wanted to provide what we looked like last year with Morgan Hunter for the 2017, 2018, 19, or 2017, 2018 school year, sorry. So they had a total absences that required subs, 7,900. They filled 6,993 subs with a total fill rate of 88%. We wanted to dig deep a little further for you and provide some information regarding our buildings, and how each building breaks down in terms of their fill rates. I believe that you have some information provided in your documents for further review. So for the month of August, we filled for 57 of our locations. Out of that, we had 76% have a fill rate between 81% and 100%. 12% had a fill rate of 71% to 80%, and 12% had 70% and below. For the month of September, we filled for 57 of our locations. Out of that, we had 51% have a fill rate between 81% and 100%. 23 have a full rate between 71% and 80%, and 26% have a full rate of 70% and below. And for the month of October, up until October 12th, we filled for 54 of our locations. Out of that, we had 41% have a fill rate between 81% and 100%, 29% have a fill rate of 71% to 80%, and 30% have a fill rate between 71% and below. We are continuously working to increase substitutes and partnerships with our building administrators. As you can see, we've had many schools that have successfully retained subs and filled vacancies. We've analyzed these reports and identified 12 of our buildings that have an average fill rate of 81% and above, and have deployed a survey to gather information on their best practices. The results will be shared with the executive directors, principals, and our instructional coaches, and we will continue to work with our buildings to offer suggestions to make improvements to our processes. In closing, I'm happy to share that our efforts on continuous recruitment, as you may remember, our goal was 400 at the end of this school year. I am pleased to say that as of today, we have 300 active substitutes. Pending board approval this evening, we'll have an additional 23, for a total of 323 active subs.
Okay. Any questions? I'd like to have some of this data disaggregated, Dr. Faust, especially, I guess, the August.
Okay.
So you have, if I, if I understand what this chart says, 76%, the large number, the largest number of absences. We have found in the past that you had explanations given that some of the early schools, schools that started early, they had very high absenteeism. How do you, do you have the data to help explain the number, high number in August, and what, what happens, what's happening?
Yeah, I don't have that with me today.
No, no, I don't expect you to...
But I'm happy to provide that.
Please do.
Absolutely. Would you like to know total absences, a breakdown of total absences, reasons as to why individuals are absent?
Whatever's easiest for you.
Okay.
You know, reasons can be crafted.
Mm-hmm.
So, so the reason is not the point. The point is, where are they?
Okay.
And I guess, do they come, and I'll give you some outs. Are they because those are vacancies, that they were not filled?
Mm-hmm.
Are they, people did not come back from vacation? What, what is your data show?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'll put it to you like that.
So August, definitely, a lot of it was vacancies, and trying to fill vacancies, still trying to get a large number of substitutes on board. We had pushed through a fair amount in early July to late July, but we still had a big push come August, so not a large subpool. But I'll go back and review that data and provide that information to the board.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
I needed clarification on the additional tables you provided.
Okay.
So some was filled, not needed, filled, needed, filled, unfilled. So I'm not clear on what these definitions mean.
Yeah, so are you talking about your documentation that you received?
Yes.
Your Excel spreadsheets? Absolutely. So we provided, how the system breaks it down is total absences, so that first column is going to be total absences district-wide, regardless of whether they require a sub or not. And then you will have fill, not needed, so that's going to be the positions that do not require a sub, such as myself. Fill, needed, is the total amount of positions that we had to fill that month. Filled is the total amount that we were able to fill, and then unfilled is the difference between those. And then your two percentages, the first percentage is what the system generates for us, but we ensure to roll that out to two decimal places to provide an accurate number in that last column.
So to clarify, for instance, for central office secretaries?
Yep.
It says fill, not needed, but the fill, needed. So since a secretary doesn't fall in the area of, well, what we're thinking as a substitute teacher?
Mm-hmm.
Can you help clarify?
Yeah.
So do we still have to advertise for substitutes for secretaries?
Yeah, so we have filled substitute secretaries in the district for quite a while, and so we fill for numerous of our locations that would not normally require a sub, so that would be central office, sometimes transportation, our maintenance or shop offices, and then those, those do count against our percentage, because it is an open absence that is saying it needs a sub. But I'm happy to isolate that data, if you'd like.
I just wondered about it. I'm not asking for any changes. I was just getting clarification for myself, so that I would understand, like, if you, if I'm seeing a high number, what that could mean, or when we're saying that something is not filled, what the level of filled is, fill is needed, so that when we're talking to constituents, where our area of need could be, possibly. So thank you for that additional clarification as to what I'm looking at.
Absolutely.
I have a question.
Absolutely.
And maybe there's an answer, and maybe there's not, but why is the total absences needing, needing subs, why is it less this year than it was last year?
That's a great question. We have made some restrictions to some of our leave this year, gearing up for a reduced kind of subpool.
Correct.
So we have reduced the amount of teachers that can take personal leave on a given day, as well as professional leave. So we have 30 allocations a day for professional leave, a day, and then if a teacher would like to take professional day, they need to make sure that it's approved by their building administrator. If their building administrator is able to accommodate that request in-house, then that's how it's managed at this time.
Okay.
One last point. We had a discussion at the retreat on Saturday, asking about support for subs. What support do we give subs?
Yeah, absolutely. So right now, we do our workshop training. We are about to launch our online, online module training through the absent management system. HR is currently going through that online process to kind of vet through some of those courses, and then we are pushing some of that out. I also encourage them to look at already posted material on classroom management, and then we encourage them to contact the substitute services team if they feel as though they're not receiving support in buildings. And then we liaison with building administrators to find out what additional resources we may be able to provide for substitutes, maybe help with a miscommunication, to try and secure subs to remain, but also to improve the environment in which we're all working.
What kind of instructional support do they get?
In terms of...
Content.
Content. So content.
Standards, all that, what they're supposed to be teaching in the classroom.
So right now, the expectation is that that would come from the teacher that is absent, and then if it is a vacancy, we are leaning on building principals to help support them through those processes.
Well, we're concerned that it's, that it must be consistent, and, and I'll stop there. How about that?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Need a, motion, please?
Just one last question.
Yes.
So I just peeked at the website for the employment.
Yes.
And it does not have a category for substitute secretaries.
Yes, so there should be, I'd have to check the date, but we did have a posting out there for substitute secretaries, for continued kind of, you know, recruitment on that. Is that what you're referring to?
Right.
Yeah.
Like, when I asked the question, the secretaries was there, maintenance was there, left unfilled. And so if we don't have a posting for someone to apply to fill a substitute position that we're reporting on, then I think we may be doing ourselves a disservice.
Yeah, absolutely.
So...
Did have a post.
We were upgrading some of our job postings today.
To the mic.
Yeah.
We were, we were updating our job postings today. That's one of the job postings that's updated, and according to my colleagues, it's, it's there.
Okay. I just want to make sure that when I go back and report to my constituents, to let them know what's available, that they have a place to go to and see where they can apply for substitute, other than the substitute teacher headline.
Yeah.
So we can help get these positions filled. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Madam President, I make a motion that we accept the first quarter substitute staffing report.
I second. Been moved and seconded to accept the report. All in, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foes nay. Motion passed. Thank you very much. Now come to the consent agenda. Any items, any persons want to be pulled?
Let me see.
The student who's graduating, do, do we do anything special for them, since they're graduating early?
We have before.
Right.
We have a ceremony.
Uh-huh. Yeah. Yeah.
If they would like to come.
Put a cap on them, gown, and a warrant, their graduation.
I didn't mean to preempt your comment. You were saying, Dr. Faust?
I go.
All right. Yes, we do.
Okay.
Need a motion for the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Back up.
Been moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda as printed. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foes nay. Consent agenda approved. Payment of bills?
I have a couple of questions. On page 21.
Which one?
I believe it's the, I think it's the original one. It would be the second from the top, the International Baccalaureate of North, check number 41110, or it might be the addendum. I forgot to write that down when I printed it out. Sorry.
You said page 21?
Yeah. It says that it's out of district travel. Is that where we paid for the International Baccalaureate to come certify us again?
Or it could be training.
Well, I know we have to pay travel expenses for them to come, and that's what I was wondering if that was, that was for.
I don't know specifically for that check, but that's where we typically, your question is, we do have to do that. I can say yes to that.
Yeah.
I don't know specifically for that check.
Check. Okay.
To clarify that with our purchasing.
Okay. And on page 12 of the main one, I have a question about check number 41010. I think it's the second from the bottom.
Corporate integrity system.
Corporate integrity system for legal services, an amount of 17,33125. What legal services have they provided us with?
It's just the coding. That is just the coding in the Business Plus system, so that is for the audit that's being done, so that's how it's coded, and descriptor is all it is.
It couldn't be called consultant, like we've seen before?
We could, probably call it a consultant.
Okay, confusing when it says legal, because I think of MVP, legal services.
If you recall, all those descriptions get pulled oftentimes from the object codes that they're paid from.
Right.
We're likely paying for it under that, that item.
Okay. The other question is, it's been four months since we signed the original contract. What's the estimated time of completion for this audit? And what has been completed to date? Have we received a report from them?
My question is...
To my knowledge, we have not, it has not been completed. It's still going on.
Dr. Nguyen, as far as I know, it's still going on. That was just an invoice for services to date, and I don't have a date for the completion.
As she was told to invoice hours.
Right. That's what that was.
Okay. The June 2nd agreement states that CIS will submit the invoices to the Board of Directors, which I'm assuming she meant Board of Education, for services provided. If the invoices have been submitted, who approved them for payment?
We're doing that now.
Who signed off to pay them, though? We have not seen. We're the ones that employed CIS. We haven't seen any invoices come to the board.
We receive the invoice? We send it to?
We process the invoice. It does come on the payment of bills, and that's the approval process now, is to approve the payment of bills.
So since the board hired them, we don't see the invoice showing us how many hours they have worked, and what they've accomplished. Correct?
You don't see that on most of what we see here. We never see that.
We hired...
I hear what you're asking, but I'm just saying, I've never seen. When have they actually given us a hard copy? She sees it, and then we get all these codings and this, so that's pretty much the norm.
So we haven't received any reports, verbal or written, from CIS to any board members? Correct?
Okay, what is your point?
No, I'm just saying...
Let me put it like this. Here's, here on page 14, L. Central, miscellaneous consultant, $5,683. What is that for?
It's for the rental of the, that we pay, the bill that we, the same one we talk about.
Same one we talk about all the time. So, so if it's rental of a building, why is it listed as consultant?
Because of words pulled on the object code.
And what days and what rate is it rented?
And the contract that you've pre-approved.
Mrs., I understand what you are, what you're asking. When Dr. Ford was here and had a meeting with this company, she directed and suggested that she start billing hours. Now, what, what is your, what is your point?
I'm just wanting to know, how many hours has she fulfilled into our contract? Does she do... Does she, do they have an estimated completion date?
You can find that out by, by pulling the invoice.
Yeah.
For clarification.
And...
And I, I'll say, on my behalf, I have asked for clarification on how many hundreds of invoices...
Oh, I know you have. That's why I'm asking.
So, so it's not, it's not unprecedented.
So, has any board member met with Ms. Clark's, Ms. Marksdale on the board's behalf? Has anyone on the board met? Because the contract is between the Board of Directors, and not any individual official agent or employee. So, has she given a report to anyone?
No, she hasn't given a report, but prior to Dr. Faust attending, Mr. Dr. Strickland, Mr. Goheen, myself, Ms. Brownlee Page, we reported that we met with Ms. Marksdale to clarify some of the confusion. Do you remember that?
When did you meet?
Dr. Strickland, Mr. Goheen.
It was sometime in August, is that right?
In August.
If I'm right. I'd have to look.
But back, back at the beginning, when we did the addendum.
Not, not, yes, yes.
When we did the addendum. Okay.
Yeah, when the addendum was done, around that time.
So, what is taking place now? She is meeting, she has met with Dr. Faust, he can speak for himself. The directors, not the directors, who are you, who are you people?
Admin.
Assistant.
Admin. So...
She's currently scheduling meetings with all of the, the staff.
Okay, well, on, on Dr. Faust's weekly report, he reported that you and Ms. Page and him met with Ms. Marksdale on September twenty-fourth. And I was wanting to know, was she giving an update then? What was the purpose of the meeting with just two board members, and not the full board?
I thought that was that meeting.
No, as far as I'm concerned, the, the conversation is, you know, where are you? Not an update, nothing written? I'm speaking for myself, I only, I can't, I'm not speaking for anybody else. But that, you know, were the organizational charts? I haven't seen an updated organizational chart, just, just generic. Would you, are you requesting a preliminary report? Is that what you're requesting?
I would like to see a preliminary report, yes.
Well, then, go ahead.
Copy of the invoice, and what was discussed on the twenty-fourth, so that all of the board members, all seven of us, can know what was discussed. Because all seven of us hired this company, and we all should be receiving the same information. So, I mean, I, I want to make a motion to pull the payment for CIS until all seven members of the board have been given the opportunity to review the invoice, or invoices, or end reports, written or verbal, that have been given or submitted to date, just so that we're all on the same page, we all know how it's progressing, and what, what, how many hours have been billed by who, because she did state that the billing hours in the contract would vary by who's doing the investigating, the cost per hour. Since we, the board, specifically hired this person, not the administration, I feel it's incumbent upon us to oversee it more than we would some, someone the administration hired that gave a bid, and received, and received the contract from doing a bid.
Okay. Do you mean, there's a motion on, on the table? A second?
Well, I have a question. Can I ask a question?
Well, what...
Okay, I'll second this, so I can ask a question.
Okay, well, I would like to make a substitute motion to pay the bill, but still pull the invoice, not pull the invoice, I'll use that term, pull the invoice, to show hours, what the invoice is invoicing, and then to have Ms. Marksdale come to our special meeting and provide the full board a report.
Can I?
I made a substitute motion.
Okay.
Need a second for the substitute motion.
I think we have to take, I'm ready to be my part. We have to take action on the first motion that's on the table.
Well, hold on. You got a motion, and you got a second. You got a proposal to make an amendment to the motion.
Substitute motion.
So, the, the issue would be, make sure you have my procedure right.
A substitute motion overrides.
It overrides.
No, you have to vote.
I think, I think the issue becomes whether or not two people who've made the motion would accept the substitute motion first. So, would you accept the substitute, substitute motion?
Yeah.
Yes, so it sounds like everybody, they're willing to accept the substitute motion. The procedure would be, substitute motion is that bill will be paid along with the other payables, but as I understand it, then Ms. Marksdale comes to the special meeting to give an update.
Back up one step, to pull the invoice, to show the hours posted.
Sorry.
Not the hours posted, the, the posting for the...
This is the first bill?
The first bill.
So, we need to just keep up the bills and what they're doing, because we have a total at the contract.
That's, that, that's the second point you didn't include, include.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was just trying to paraphrase what you said. So, as I understand the second, the substitute motion would be, the bill gets paid along with the other payables, and I want you to prove them, but that the statement or the invoice is distributed to the board, and with Ms. Marksdale to come to the special meeting to give an update to the board.
That's, that's my clarity, is that clarity of everybody else.
Mm-hmm. That's agreeable.
That's a substitute motion, it's properly part of the board.
I don't think it's been a second.
I think, I think, well...
He says she agreed.
Okay.
Because it's a substitute, the two of them.
And she said she agreed.
Agreed. Okay.
Is that right? I think that's right.
Anybody have a second? Further discussion and clarity. Are you clear?
Mm-hmm.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passed. Are you clear?
For clarity, I'm pulling the invoice, I'll give a copy to Dr. Faust for your, to just, to give to you all, at your special award meeting. That's my, that's my responsibility.
Oh, that's correct.
Okay.
And then we will notify, we want a report update at our special meeting, which will, which is Tuesday?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Question. She says she's pulling the invoice, but she was supposed to be paid as well.
I'll give you a cop, I'll give Dr. Faust a copy to distribute to all of you.
Because that motion include all paying the bills.
You still make a motion to pay all the bills.
You need a motion?
Includes the...
Okay.
I move we pay all the bills.
Been moved and seconded, pay the bills? Excuse me, it's only been moved.
Second.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear you.
It's okay, I'm sorry.
Been moved and seconded, pay the bills. Discussion.
I just have a question about Apple. We keep seeing this Apple Computers bill. We're not getting a discount for this thirty-three thousand. An education discount, something.
I'm sure there's a, a discount, but we buy a lot of computers, so...
Okay, just...
I'll say, let me, let me retract that. As much of a discount as Apple will give, they don't have to give any discounts.
Yeah.
So, they don't have that free program we can qualify for anymore? I'm just, okay.
And, and Dr. Mather, I'm sorry, Dr. Yeager.
No, I was done. I was just trying to...
She's just...
While we're pulling invoices...
Yes.
Page twenty. High V, eight thousand, six hundred and eight dollars and eighty-four cents. Page twenty, which is just on the first...
Is there a check number? Can you read that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Forty-one, one, zero, four.
Forty-one, one, zero, four.
Four-one, one, zero, four.
Thank you.
Any others?
You said pay...
You want all of the documentation, Dr. Win, for that high V?
Yes, ma'am.
Because that'll be multiple pages, so I just want, okay. And a copy for each board member? Or...
Put it on, on the, put it in the docs.
And while we're talking about this, Infinite Campus, can, can we discuss it maybe offline about their responsibility for technical support for us, or how we can get the billing? Because we're paying a lot of money out for Infinite Campus.
Is, is Infinite?
But there's some, I didn't, but I didn't see it on here.
Oh, I was asking.
Right, but, right, but we paid out a lot for that, but just to make sure that we are getting the proper technical support that was originally agreed upon.
Yeah, we could, perhaps the best thing might be, suggest pulling the contract, if I recall, last I looked at it, it bolted the services that they were providing, and that might outline and address your question, Dr. Yeager.
Okay, thank you.
Are we ready to pay the bills?
I have, I have a question. One, one more question. Could you, you know, I, I don't have the, the check number, but on page ten, Carolyn, Country Cousins. What is that?
Carolyn's Country Cousins.
What is it?
Field, a field trip.
Field trip. A field trip to go to...
Pumpkin patch.
It's a what?
Pumpkin patch.
Pumpkin patch.
Halloween, pumpkin patch.
Okay, four thousand dollars, forty-seven, I'm, I'm, I'm missing.
Two hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Carolina Biological Supply Company is four thousand.
That's correct.
Okay, okay, I got you. And, and are these CNC produce?
Do we see it now?
Uh, Cisco food and milk, are those, are those monthly expenditures, or are they...
We'd, I'd have to pull the invoice, but either monthly, sometimes they have multiple months on there, so I'm not sure. I'm not seeing which one, Mr. Brown, you're looking at. What page are you on?
I got you.
Page nine.
Thank you.
Pardon me?
Page forty-nine, seven, one. Forty-nine?
Four, zero, nine, seven, zero.
Let me pull the invoices, or Mr. Correll, if you could look at check number four, zero, nine, seven, zero.
And, and while you're doing that, Hillen Dairy.
Highland Dairy.
Highland.
Highland Dairy.
Dairy supply for nutritional services.
Is that monthly?
Yeah, we want to know if it's got, if the invoice is monthly, or if it's more than once.
It's, it's for a period, it's, it's monthly.
Is it?
For that month.
For that month?
Yeah, for weeks in that month, yes.
And that seems like a lot of money.
For the milk.
Buy a lot of milk.
Milk.
Two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars?
We got twenty-two thousand kids.
But we do also have to order special milk. We also have to order special milk.
Probably covers other dairy products, too, like yogurt and cheese and stuff, too.
Yeah.
Dr. Win, are we pulling invoices for those, or do we get those questions addressed? I just need to...
Mr. Brown?
I would like the one on, on Cisco food and milk.
Okay. Cisco?
Yeah.
I want to find that one.
So, Cisco, Highland, and CNC produce, correct?
Yeah, we'll pull those invoices, thank you.
Any others? It's been moved and seconded and discussed. About payables. Are you sure, Dr. Yeager? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passed.